Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we good now? Are we okay?
I think so.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald, did you have a comment from public hearing?
Yeah, again, county solicitor. First of all, I'd like to thank council on their future unanimous decision to affirm to have the solicitor for county council on the ballot. Since you, the home rule counsel, is for the people, by the people, and of the people, I am positive, I am sure that you will trust the people to vote on council getting your own solicitor. I also trust that the citizens of Luzern County to stop the inherent conflict that the county solicitor has because they are employed directly by the county manager. Where there is a conflict between home rule counsel, who represents the people of Luzern County, and the county manager, who represents the employee of the county, the solicitor will inherently side with their employer, which is the manager, and not side with the citizens. It's called self-survival.
Oh, you do?
So again, I am looking forward to a unanimous, because I know you guys all love the citizens of Luzern. I think this might be the only unanimous vote we'll get. So let's start off the new year with making sure you guys protect the citizens of Luzern County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Newman?
Yes, good evening. I stand in favor of your vote for the, your own counsel. You should have it. And the issue here really is amending the charter. The framers, when they built, framed the county charter, there were a couple times, they based this charter on conditions at the time, which weren't very good. They considered austerity. Tried to keep everything as compact as they could, because financial conditions at that time were not very good. And finances were out of control. The three key words in the county at that time were spend, borrow, and tax. So framers put together a document, which has lasted some 10 years now, close to 10 years, and it's a good document. But it's time to change it. It's time to enact a change in it. And keep in mind, the Constitution of the United States was passed in 1795. It was amended eight years later. So you guys are two years late, amending the charter. Our framers said, hey, you know, there's room for change. And in 1795, January 11th, then, so. I think that, I think the people of the counties will go along with this. I'm glad you said, I mean, if we're following the charter, and I think you're on the right track. And I would, I would encourage, I would encourage a unanimous vote, because you really need your own lawyer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mr. Griffin?
I have a comment, Ms. Chair.
I'm sorry, who's that? Go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
I'm, I'm in support of county council having a solicitor. I brought the issue up as a member of council before, as a citizen before that. It's an inherited conflict that the council has with the solicitor. And it's no, no fault of the office of law's ability to represent both parties, but it puts everybody in a bad position if they have to represent council and manager at the same time. You don't get independent representation. And, and quite honestly, the office of law picks other council members or other attorneys when there's a conflict for the office of law. Retirement board has their own, retirement board has their own solicitor. Many of the agencies have their own solicitor. The charter clearly says they're supposed to represent, the office of law's supposed to represent everybody in the county. And when we drafted the charter, that was because we had the nine, the seven row offices that everybody was independent, and they all had their own solicitor. So they thought it was best to have an office of law at the time. Mr. Newman hit it right on the head. There's times of change. It's not necessary for us to have that tightly restraint that we had before. And council needs to have their own independent council for situations that come up, if they need legal advice on drafting a resolution or an ordinance or anything of that nature. The office of law gets to the picture, choose who gets separate counsel. It's time for the people to pick. If council gets their own counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Griffin, you have a, you have a clip up here, but are you, did you want to speak on this?
No, I didn't.
Sure, sure. Yes, no, no worries. Mr. Raybo, did you have a comment? Was that you before?
Uh, no, but I would like to speak on this if I could, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of council. I would concur with everyone who spoke that council needs to have their own legal representation. And I would like to expound on what Controller Griffiths just said about the charter in the recommendations under the final report from the government study commission that Mr. McGinley even said about at the last meeting with respect to why there was no, that council didn't have their own legal representation, that the government study commission said that they did not want lawsuits between, now, this was between row offices, not between branches of government. There is a big difference. Branches of government are by themselves, a branch onto themselves. Divisions are, as Mr. McGinley and all of you would know, are under the administrative auspices of the manager. So therefore, this would be council in the legislative function, having their own legal representation, just as Congress does, just as the general assembly does, just as councils do all over our state, have their own legal representation. And the administrative executive branch has their own legal representation, and the judiciary has their own legal representation. So therefore, this is just a no-brainer. And Madam Chair, I would like to ask the, if you could ask the council clerk to put into the record for the public hearing, Roman numeral 13, under the final government study commission report for the home rule charter. If that could be placed into the record, I'd appreciate it, because I don't want to read it out verbatim. So that will spell it out clearly what the charters, the charter drafters were discussing at the time with, with disrespect for the legal representation. And I do believe that it is now time for the legislative branch to have their own legal representation, to be able to defend itself from any litigation that it takes from outside and within the government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Any other members of the public?
I'd like to speak, Ms. Chairman.
Sure.
Harry Haas Kingston Burrow, I'd like to speak on agenda items number four through nine. And thank you, Ms. Chair, members of council.
Mr. Haas, we're on the public hearing. Mr. Haas, it's a public hearing.
Thank you. Oh, what, Ms. Chair, you know, speaking, that was on the public hearing, fine. I concur with everybody what they said about the solicitor. We desperately need one. And frankly, everybody, the, if we had our own solicitor, it would clear up some of the issues I'm going to bring up tonight during the general voting session. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Any other members of the public? Okay, hearing done, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Someone's second.
All in favor? opposed, extensions? Meeting adjourned. We'll move right into the voting session. It is 6:14, we're calling the meeting to order. We already give the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Can we do a roll call for Lawrence?
Can anybody hear me? Hello?
Everybody.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, this is Mr. Manta. I'm sorry, I was muted.
Mr. Manta, we're, we're beginning the, we're beginning the voting session.
I just would like to make a quick comment. I concur with Walter and all the people. I concur with Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Manta. You can speak during a couple comments. Walter? Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Here.
Mr. Schneig?
Present.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Willovich?
Here.
Mr. Rado?
Here.
I don't believe we have any recognition or ceremonial proclamation on retirement, any deletions to the agenda. Hearing done, do we have a?
Actually, I wanted to delete the number four, number five, and the six, number seven, and number eight off the agenda. I think some of these items should go to the committee before they come back to us. I mean, we basically want to spend money this way to plan it.
Okay, are we making a motion to delete fourth and wait?
Yes.
Does he have a second?
No, I'd like to comment on that, too. I think that's the whole point.
We need a second before we get comment time.
A second on that. Can I make a comment?
Why?
Okay. Yeah, I feel that, you know, these kinds of big expenditures and different council issues need to have more discussion between council. I know last, the last meeting, we also did set up all of our committees. I think those committees need to be utilized, especially strategic initiatives, and that's the one that I'm the chair. I think these issues should be going through. That gives the public more chance to comment. They should also at least be put on a work session before a voting session. I think that's usually generally how we do things to the council.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to remove items four through eight. Do you want to do a roll call on them, please? Mr. LaScavitch?
No.
Mr. McDermott? Oh, excuse me, Mr. Lombardo?
No. A little clarification, you, all four of them, you're voting on all four together?
All four together.
Okay, just sorry. Thank you.
Four through, four, five, six, seven, and eight.
Okay.
Mr. LaScavitch was a no, Mr. Lombardo was a no, and Mr. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Oh.
Mr. Schneig?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willovich?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
No.
Get knocked to this.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the voting session agenda?
Motion. Check.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Okay, the voting session agenda is adopted. Mr. Willock, did you want a comment on the?
Yes, council met an executive session from 5:00 PM until approximately 5:50 PM. Received a report from legal counsel relating to two issues, Wachilla versus Griffith at all, case number 2020, I'm sorry, case number 9178 of 2020, and also Hazzori versus West Pittston at all, case number three, colon, 18, dash, CV, 1982. It was concluded approximately 5:50 PM.
Thank you, attorney DeLuca. We're now, we'll have public comment on voting session agenda items only. Mr. Knapp, I just look for you. Agenda item?
Citizens of Luzern County, I'd like to address, in the past year, in 2021, Luzern County Council hired Stevens to lead to represent the legislative branch or the council of government, and the taxpayer paid this firm $30,000 for services rendered, essentially being a solicitor for their county council. After the services were completed, they were relieved from their responsibility. For another $30,000, the firm could have been on payroll to represent the council for the years, and in a lot of the instances, the office of law had a difference of opinion. The same year, 2021, former councilwoman Sigmund was in position for Luzern County citizens. And she is an attorney, and also at the time is president of the bar association. They did not stop counsel from seeking representation from Stevens and Lee Attorney Services. I have observed the responsibility of elected councilmen. Responsibilities are in a fiduciary nature. Fiduciary is involved in trust, especially about the relationship between a trustee, that's you, the council members, and a beneficiary, we, the taxpayers represented by you council members. You've been elected to make decisions that is the best interest of the citizens of Luzern County, and unequivocally, there is a necessity to have a solicitor for Luzern County Council and Luzern County citizens, taxpayers. Once it moves to May 17th for the primary, it's, it's a sure thing that we want to vote to have a solicitor for representation for Luzern County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Mr. Griffin? Agenda item?
I want to address item number five, six, seven, eight, and nine on the agenda. When we were on council, not too long ago, a couple months ago, we were told we were a lame duck council, and we were not supposed to be voting on certain items, until the new council was seated. I feel the same way about these five, six, seven, and eight. I know we were waiting for the final rule, when council was seating and trying to decide what we're going to spend that money on, back in October, I guess, or November, or October. And certainly, we were cautious about spending the money, because we didn't know about a final rule. I think we need to be just as cautious now without an actual manager. We have an acting county manager who's supposed to be running the day-to-day operations in the interim, before we get a full-time manager picked by the search committee and approved by this council. I think it's imperative that this council not spend this money without allowing the new manager the opportunity to at least have the opportunity to spend it on the things that he wants. I don't think anything that's on this list is earth-shattering, has to be done today. And I think that some of the items that are on here, maybe the new manager may want to appropriate that money in another, in another fashion, some sort. We all received a report from the IT, from C cap on the IT department. There seems to be a plan that's missing in a lot of these items on this agenda, five, six, seven, and eight, that there's really not a whole cohesive plan as to how we can actually spend the money, or we want to allocate the money. So I think council should vote to either table this or at least postpone it until you get a full-time manager, instead of tying his hands and taking $25 million of the money that he might want to appropriate in another fashion. So I think that would be a proven way to handle that. I don't think that, I'm not saying that the projects aren't worth spending the money on, I'm just saying that we need to have a better plan as to how that money's going to be spent, and allow the new manager the opportunity to spend the money, not the acting manager, who's supposed to just continue with the day-to-day operation. And on item nine, I think that was talked about pretty extensively under public hearing. I just encourage council to vote in the affirmative to put that on the ballot, let the people decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Newman?
Yes, I'd like to address items number three and number six. Pick number six first. Information technology is something you can't do without. And my history with it, which is, and I'm not the resident expert, but it seems like there's a new family of technology that comes out about every five years. It's kind of like an automobile, you know? You buy one, and five years later, you might be looking for another one. And it's been that way with technology, so. What I'm saying here is, it's going to come down to pay me now or pay me later. And the longer you wait, the longer you wait, the technology passes, you buy, and something happens. And we've gone through that, and you don't want to go through that exercise again. What I would suggest in the, in the proposal, and I think I saw a figure mentioned this morning in the $2 million range, what builds that? What, what are we getting for $2 million? Okay? Is it the latest and the greatest? You know, is it a Cadillac? Is it a Chevy? Nothing wrong with Chubbys, but, you know, are we getting the best? Are we getting next to the best? Or are we going bottom shelf? So that is something that needs to be done, but it needs to be looked at. Item number three. If I'm correct, this is what we heard two weeks ago about the contractor that we have is going out and giving us better rates, better opportunities. This is very well-written, and the key in it is an ultimate line, change in interest rate. Change in interest rate. Well, if we can get something, if we can get financing at a lower rate than what we're already paying, we ought, we ought to do it. And my previous presentation, I mentioned the austerity of framers, and, and they, they did a good job in putting a package together. But previous council, since the government changed in 2012, has brought us to this point where our finances are in such good shape that our lenders are saying, we'll give you a better rate. So my point is, we should take this. This looks like a pretty good deal, but I'm sure your finance department is going to study it and give you more of a recommendation, that that number three is very well-written, and it looks like a great opportunity for your council. And it's up to you, you ten folks sitting here, to carry on what previous council has, has given you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes, I'd like to address a few things. Nine to items, the number agenda items, five, six, seven, eight. We got $25 million. $25 million. And you guys just voted to just send it to the manager to do whatever you want. You guys are in charge of your committees. Be responsible for those committees. Take accountability, do some extra work, do some diligence, and make sure that the citizens of Luzern County get bangs for their bucks, and everybody's responsible how they spend that $25 million that we're going to get once in a lifetime. So I ask $25 million to appropriate to charities, not vote this down. Do not give anyone a blank check. We voted, hired you to represent us, the citizens of Luzern County. There's $25 million, so it's not be the first that our acting county manager, Ramilda Prokomo, to pass it on, however she feels. She is temporary acting county manager. As far as the IT and Miss Ramilda Prokomo, she has already proven that she might be a good lawyer, but she's not a really good manager. She hired three people in IT and never did background. You guys just got to report. Everything I put on that thing, I did it 24 hours, said how to analyze a problem, how to solve it, and make it better. You had to hire an outside source. That's what managers for. What are we paying her for? So please, do not just give $25 million to an acting county manager. I think it's premature for an acting county manager to be able to allocate $25 million in spending on projects that may not be the wishes of the new county manager, who will be hired in the next couple of months. County council needs to table these four items into the agenda on a search committee on a new hire, that will have new, new and better ideas on the use of this once-in-a-lifetime federal gift. Do your jobs. Make sure you do your committees, do your due diligence, and just don't give someone a blank check for $25 million. That is just stupendous.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Any other members of the public?
I'd like to speak, Ms. Rado. Harry Haas Kingston Burrow, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Harry.
Agenda items four through nine, Ms. Chair. Council members, a couple things, just being a form. First of all, welcome to council, five of you new members who are on board. She was taking an awful lot these first few weeks. Regarding issue number four with legal team, I, I just hope you really understand the situation there, that that, they were dismissed indefinitely from council, from doing business for Luzern County because of purely political reasons. And if you talk to your fellow council members, that was the debate, or if you listen to the recordings, you'll, you'll see that was, was very obvious. So please consider not accepting that and stopping the political games in Luzern County. We can never quite get rid of them, but this is one of those big votes. Secondly, the, the relief funds. People count on you guys, especially you five, who are brand-new faces. They're counting on you for doing the right thing. We debated back and forth for many months about the use of these relief funds, and the discussion from at least three or four city members there that are, that have served, was that we don't quite have the final rule yet, so we're going to hold off, and we're going to wait. And we're not saying that the homestead idea was a bad idea, but we're just going to wait. Well, lo and behold, here it is, and I don't see the homestead on the agenda, but I see these pet projects coming up. Not to say they don't have some value, but at the same time, we, like some other people said there in the public comment, the manager is temporary. I love Ramilda very much. She's, she's a good person. the manager is temporary. I love Ramilda very much. She's a good person, but she is the temporary manager. So I would hope that when you put some extra thought into this tonight, that you do in fact postpone this, send it through the appropriate channels, and really vet these projects. Also, please consider the homestead exemption, which would spend about forty percent of just the present funds. And it's something that the people are very passionate about. Please consider that, and I really don't want to go on talk radio and lobby for this again. Please do the right thing and have the discussion about that issue. And then lastly, you've got some settlements coming up. Please vote no against those settlements. Those are political, and they should have been dealt with from a managerial standpoint. One was obviously before Home Rule took over. The other one was during the previous manager. That was not handled well, and to settle for that would be a slap in the face to county tax payers. So welcome aboard, everybody. I hope you're having fun, and I'm going to sign off. Thank you, Ms. Radal, for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Haas. Mr. Barbe, do you have a?
I'd like to have a say tonight, please. Richard Manta.
We have someone right now. Mr. Manta, you'll be next.
Thank you very much.
Jason Carr, Sabresburg, Pennsylvania. I just want to come in front of council tonight and talk as a businessperson regarding the small business and nonprofit twenty-million-dollar allocation. It's hard to believe that it wasn't tabled as requested by Mr. Urban. You know, Ted, Walter, and Harry Haas made a great point. Ramilda is only a temporary manager in lieu of yourselves hiring a permanent manager as well. I don't feel that Ramilda is qualified to make a decision of such stature as well. I don't believe that Hazleton Can Do or the Wilkes-Barre Chamber of Commerce have any idea of how to allocate the money. In a story written by Jennifer Andes I read a couple of days ago, that the details of how the loans are going to be paid back will not be made known until after you vote for this. That was in the paper, I believe. I know that's what I read. I could tell you that you are not here, and the county is not here, to give loans out to small businesses. The Small Business Administration has billions of dollars available for businesses that are in need, if they're in trouble. I can tell you, I'm currently, I'll give you a little background. The Payment Protection Plan loans are closed. There are no more. You cannot receive a loan for that program. But the emergency disaster relief loans are still available to every business in Luzerne County as well. I took money from the initial tranche that was offered. Somebody called me, I took it. Now I have to pay it back. Those loans are still available. So there's a second tranche of money being solicited to current businesses. And it ranges anywhere from two times to four times your gross revenues in 2019, which is pre-pandemic. So the programs are available. This is what I would say to council. Maybe not offer any money to existing businesses in Luzerne County, but help those businesses coordinate their efforts to accept loans from the Small Business Administration. Possibly hiring a staff of maybe six people to work for the businesses in Luzerne County to help them coordinate or be the conduit between small businesses and the SBA. Because right now, all these small businesses in Luzerne County are hanging on by a thread. Many are. And they need help to get that money. But the money does not need to come from Luzerne County. It needs to come from the SBA. The SBA has billions of dollars, and it really is hard to believe. I'll wrap up. It's hard to believe that without almost zero discussion that you'll vote on this tonight and possibly allow this money to be allocated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Manta?
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to say, first of all, the discussion about the solicitor. This was brought up many meetings ago before this whole board was even re-elected. And I think at this time, I believe this is a must. A must-have thing for the county, for Luzerne County, to continue their fight for the people. Remember that document that's on the wall. We, the people. We, the people, elected you. We, the people, should be serviced by you for the betterment of the county. And I believe that if we could get this all straightened out and the county could get on the right track for the solicitor, this would be a great help. And also, what Mr. Carr said about the people that need help in this county for businesses. The businesses in this county right now are just about ready to go broke. Because of the fact, I visit a lot of these businesses in the area, and everybody's saying the same thing. They don't have money to hire extra people. People don't want to work. The people that do come to work, they're exemplary people that are fighting this cause within the group of people that are we, the people. And I feel that I'm going to be the oddball out of the group, yes. Ramilda is a very, very, very qualified person to adjudicate many items. Yes, I have all the respect in the world for Ramilda. I would speak of her, kind words to her every day of the week. But the experience of being a manager is a far cry from being an adjudicator to the law. She is a fantastic person, and I will speak highly of her the rest of my life. And I think that if she has the right input from people, she can get the job done. And I know, I'm the oddball of the group. Everybody is saying that she's not qualified to do the job. I think that she is qualified to do the job with the right input. Now, I don't know if she's there or not. Ramilda, hello. It's just the fact that
Hello, my friend.
When they brought Mr. Lawton in, Mr. Lawton was a all right, when they brought Mr. Lawton in, he was a professional manager. Ramilda didn't have that chance to be a professional manager. But I'll tell you what, I believe she can make the right decision. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manta. Any other members of the public? I see Mr. Raybo has his hand up.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. With regards to number one on the agenda, I sent council an email with respect to Act sixty, or Act thirty-three of 2021 with regards to registration of out-of-state entities bidding on properties for tax sale auctions and repositories. I never received an answer back with respect to those properties being bid on in the repositories for tonight's meeting. And also, I didn't include in my email if they had delinquent utility bills under the real estate tax sale law, that those bidders are disqualified from bidding if they have any delinquent taxes or delinquent utility bills. So I would ask if the manager, the Tax Claim Bureau, or if the Office of Law in general got any word that any of those bidders, you know, had any outstanding delinquent taxes or delinquent utility bills on other properties. That's my question on number one. Also, with respect to number four, item number four on the agenda for the law firm, I do believe that this law firm should be not considered based on it was a totally egregious stunt that put a black eye on Luzerne County to the U.S. Supreme Court. Now, if that isn't an egregious political stunt to prevent a nomination of a Supreme Court justice, I don't know what does. So, you know, for anybody to consider number four, I think is just political expedience. Yeah, it's worse. Also, with regards to what was said for the American Recovery Act money, I concur with Controller Griffith and others that said that there needs to be a permanent manager to do an assessment of what that manager, the permanent manager, does with respect to overall what the totality of the money is. And also, I concur with the new council member. I'm sorry if I mispronounce your names. Either it's Mr. Lescavage or Mr. Thornton who said it should go through the committees and have a discussion first before you have any kind of, you know, so you could have an idea of a sense of what the priorities are for that funding, how they could be utilized. So I think those are key, and as well as with the nonprofits and businesses. Can Do, I could tell you from being a lifelong Hazleton resident, Can Do does not care for the small businesses in Hazleton area as it is political, as they're politically connected. All they care about are the politicos and who can give them the most donations. Okay, I would rather give it through I'm finishing up, Madam Chair. Just give me twenty seconds. I would rather give it through Luzerne County Community Development Office directly to the small business owners rather than those organizations like Can Do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I believe the council member you're referring to is Councilmember Rollopich. Any other members of the public?
Yes, this is Jess Morgan from Dallas. I'd like to talk about using the relief funds. Any money's going to nonprofits. They're already given a heck of a lot of money. And it was in the paper that each nonprofit gets to take ten percent of any money's given right off the top for administrative fees. And I'm wondering if the money that you're proposing to give is going to also give them ten percent right off the top. It's terrible. Please don't give away your powers that we helped you get into office so that you can make good decisions. And right off the bat, a month in, you're going to give away your powers to the acting manager? We're hoping that we're going to get an acting manager that knows what the heck he's doing or she's doing with our money. And the fact that you would not even think about giving any money to the public, to homeowners, as Harry and Walter and Steve wanted to do, and you would turn around and give money to nonprofits that have already gotten all kinds of money. And I think it's terrible, and you better think about what you're doing tonight. It's very important, and the public is watching. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Any other members of the public have time on agenda items? Okay, here in on, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the January sixth, twenty twenty-two reorganization meeting? Council members, if when you give a first, if you could say first and then your name, or second and then your name, just to make it clear so people that aren't here, public things clarify. Thank you. So we have a first, a second, roll call, Ms. Lawrence? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion to approve the minutes of the January eleventh, twenty twenty-two voting session?
Second, Perry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Abstentions. Here in on, motion passes. Old business, kind of thinking, have anything? Agenda items for the county manager. Number one, motion to adopt resolution approving the sales of certain parcels of property held in repository by Elite Revenue Solutions LLC acting as the Luzerne County Tax Claimier.
Second, Lescavage.
Other questions, Jim?
Yeah, just a quick question. Is there any validity? I don't know if you can leave anything any validity to Mr. Raybo's comments about the utility bills. Has anybody checked into that particular claim, if that is part of the law? Should we just make a motion to table this until we can find that out?
I could forward an email to Elite Revenue, but that was just recently, so.
Do we have a motion to table? Do we have a second?
No, second, Rollup.
Roll call on tabling? This is a roll call on tabling the motion. Mr. Lavardo?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. Radal? Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for agenda item number one. Do we have a roll call on the motion? Ms. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lavardo?
Yes.
Ms. Radal? Yeah. Motion passes. Number two, motion to adopt resolution approving an agreement with Newport Township or the Luzerne County Treasurer to collect Newport Township taxes.
So move, Lescavage.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Swat, did you want to speak on that?
Just briefly, Madam Chair, we've collected these taxes over the past few years. I did attach the minutes of the municipality. As I said, normally, it would have been done in December, and it was missed during December. We just needed this ratified by the council before the tax bills go out for February.
Thank you, Mr. Swat. Mr. Urban?
I know it's highlighted in yellow that there's a continuation of the agreement, but however, the new council members have not seen that agreement whatsoever. There's no copy attached to this, so you want to vote on something that you can't even see the agreement for. I mean, understandably, it is a continuation from previous council, but once again, make a motion to table this since there's no agreement attached to this.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second? Okay, motion to table fails. No second. Can we vote on adopting the resolution? Roll call, please. Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lavardo?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Ms. Radal? Yes. Motion passes. Number three, motion to introduce ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a proposal to reduce the interest rate on the County of Luzerne Commonwealth of Pennsylvania non-electoral indebtedness of a general obligation note series of twenty nineteen originally issued in the principal amount of thirty-three million, three hundred five thousand dollars for and toward financing a capital improvement program, a current refunding program, and paying the cost of issuing the note, providing for maximum interest rate, maximum maturity amount, and place of payment with respect to the twenty nineteen note making a covenant for the payment of the debt service on the amended and restated note, providing for the filing of any required documents, authorizing the execution of documentation, memorializing in change in interest rate and delivery thereof, including the delivery of an amended and restated note, and authorizing other necessary actions.
Present motion.
Second, McInley.
Roll call. Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lavardo?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Ms. Radal? Yes. Motion passes. Number four, motion to adopt resolution authorizing the law form of Joyce Farming and Ranch PC to be added to Luzerne County's approved channel of law firm, providing insurance defense services.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Perry.
Second, Perry.
Roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vellavich?
No.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Three, no, seven, yes, it passes.
Motion passes. Number five, motion to adopt resolution authorizing the distribution of American Rescue Plan Act funds to Luzern County's small business and nonprofit organization.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
One second, we'll get a, we'll see if we have a motion in a second.
Okay.
McInley.
Motion, McInley? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Motion to table. Return back to committee.
Okay, I have a motion to table by Mr. Urban, does he have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second, roll call on tabling, agenda item number five.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vellavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Number five is tabled. Number six, motion to adopt resolution authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds on various information technology product, projects.
So move, Lescavage.
Second, or a motion to table this.
I'll second that, hello.
Roll call on tabling the motion.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vellavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
This is a motion to table?
Table.
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Rado?
No.
Four, yes, six, no. Rado, not to me.
Not tabled? It is not tabled. All right, so we had first, uh, who made the first?
Mr. Lescavage.
And we have a second, um.
I have a question. Uh, just wondering about the amount of money, is, if we vote for this tonight, is that amount of money that was given to us in our package, is that?
So we have.
Locked in stone or?
We have, uh, manager Kokos will speak to this and, and Mr. James will speak to it as well from I T if we have any questions like that, but we'll, we'll see if we have any questions after they speak.
Uh, good evening, uh, council.
I said I wanted to make a few comments, but then you guys can address it. That's appropriate.
Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
Okay, so I understand that you're looking at two point four six three billion and, uh, obviously we got a forty-eight page document yesterday from C cap regarding the deficiencies in I T. And quite honestly, they're very scathing against this county. Uh, I mean, that's kind of what my, my summation was all along as far as improper planning, uh, no data encryption on hard drive, no proper protection. Uh, no, the only time you're really planning is around budget season. There's no asset tracking, you don't even know what you're buying and where it's going and how you track it and how you get it back when you give it out. There's no onboarding, there's no, uh, sort of like taking back the equipment in a sense, no processes, procedures, policies. Everything, you know, to, to really, uh, look at from a big picture perspective, you don't know what you're buying. You don't know how to use it, you don't know where it's at. And no wonder we had a cyber attack in this county. Uh, quite honestly, I mean, you're looking for fifty thousand dollars on Adobe licensing, number one, did you go through the government agency portion of Adobe? Number two, does that, do, do that many people need Adobe Acrobat to redact information in this county? I mean, fifty thousand dollars, I think, would probably cover about one third of the operation. I don't think people need to really redact, uh, a lot of information here in this county. I mean, we, we were supposed to be transparent in our way of business here with this form of government. Honestly, I don't think you really know what you need. I'm looking at even the proposal on this Dell server, all this is, is just pretty much like literature from Dell. It's pretty much their spec sheet on a PowerPoint presentation. It's just a sales pitch. I mean, it, it, yes, you need probably good equipment, you need, uh, and I think firstly, you need to hire a director that knows what he or she is doing before you can properly plan to spend two point four six three million dollars. You gotta find out where you're going before you take the money and run with it. I think it's very problematic. I mean, I look at that report and I'm thinking, you know, the individuals that were in that, you know, where the, the head of that department has been fired a long time ago. Because it's really bad, it makes us look bad and it leaves us exposed to risk and, and potentially a lot of data loss. I mean, you don't even do full backups based on that, that assessment, you're doing partial. Yeah, I mean, there's no planning. I don't see how I could even give you two point four six three million dollars in good conscience because I don't know what you're gonna do with the money. How are you gonna implement the things that you say you're gonna implement before you have a plan and a director?
Mr. Urban, let's hear from, let's hear from manager Kokobo and, and Mr. James, and then if you have any questions, that would be, uh, obviously done, that's, we'll, we'll vote from there.
Thank you, council members. Uh, I just have a brief statement and if there's technological, uh, issues or questions, Ed James will, uh, address those. Uh, it's true, uh, that previously, uh, the I T department, uh, was not really good at conveying, uh, the needs and the requirements uh, of the I T department to management or council in a timely manner, consistent and a detailed manner. Uh, but there are documents, uh, and spreadsheets and vendor agreements, uh, and the I T budget, uh, that was, uh, passed by council, uh, that requested, uh, explicitly detailing what is required to keep our county hardware updated, secure, uh, and reliably accessible to the public agencies, departments and the courts. Um, there is no disagreement from management that we need a long-term, uh, strategic plan. Uh, I, uh, uh, actually referred, uh, the, uh, I T assessment to, uh, C cap. Uh, and, uh, there's no disagreement and that there was a failure to address, uh, these issues in a long-term management solution. None whatsoever. But that should not be the reason to jeopardize the current reality of the situation. After having, uh, a review of the I T department and time to access the documents of the previous operations, uh, manager, we now have documented proof that the failure to properly communicate these needs has placed this burden on us here and now. Uh, but not acting, uh, on the documented issues, uh, which we all know currently exist, uh, would be irresponsible, especially knowing, uh, we have the opportunity and a small window in time to correct the documented issues. Uh, we all know the difficulties, uh, we experienced during the downtime caused by malware attack and that situation was caused by an unexpected event where we had little to no control. And this situation is and was preventable if we act on the facts as we know them, uh, today. Uh, I, uh, will publicly state that, uh, if, uh, the amounts of monies that are requested today are not used, we will, uh, return the money into the, um, uh, the general A R P, uh, fund. Uh, but, uh, we do need, uh, to act now on, at least to earmark certain monies, uh, for I T software and hardware. Uh, it is the intent of this, uh, administration, uh, to provide counsel with all the information going forward on how the money, uh, is used, uh, what the bidding process is. Uh, but we really need to make a commitment now so that we don't have future failures. So at this point, uh, Ed James, if you have anything, uh, that you want to add?
Hi, everyone, uh, Ed James here from, from I T. Uh, first, thank you for allowing me to answer any questions that you guys might have tonight, um, whether it's from, uh, the council or, or the public. Um, I know that list might seem, um, tragically long, but it is, uh, every bullet point on that list is vital to move Luzern County in the right direction, um, technologically speaking. There are important, uh, bullet points on there, like that Dell replacement. There are several, it's, uh, not a PowerPoint, but there are several, um, hard outlined points in there, the, the replacements that would happen. I know there have been talks in the past about end of life and doomsday prophecies, but, um, the, the reality is real. Uh, in, in October, that system is, uh, kaput, there's no security support on it. There's, um, no software and hardware support on it and it is completely maxed out. And at the current rate that we're going, we add about fifteen, um, V M's to that, uh, system a year. We can no longer add anything else. So should something come up or a department need, um, uh, you know, a, a virtual machine spun up, uh, you know, for their department, uh, we can't do it. There's also, uh, some bullet points on there for cybersecurity. There's one on there for the replacement of the A C unit, the annex. I could speak truthfully to say that, um, there are times in the summer where we have to run back to the annex after hours um, to make sure the humidifiers have water in them. There have been times where we needed to run fans, um, and that's just to keep things going in case the main system fails. The, uh, E M A badge reader on there, that is, that's for down, uh, at E M A, it's for the data center only. Um, it includes the license pack that will be used by building the grounds and for other departments as well. The U P S, uh, uh, system is to expand the redundancy down there. Uh, should the main, uh, battery backup, U P S backup fail, that, uh, closes that gap. So if you have any other questions about that, um, you know, I'd be happy to help you out. Uh, I know that, uh, the, we're talking about that C cap report, um, and, and the strategic planning and things like that. It's, it's, there, there are two sides of that report, there's the summary and then there's the actual gumption that, uh, explains the different things and, and the, you know, the adversities that we're against. Um, so the, you know, that's a, a separate, uh, topic. The cybersecurity, uh, section of that, it covers software licensing, ARC to pool, malware bites, uh, and, um, countywide cybersecurity training. And then we have, uh, network equipment on there for the replacement of Cisco end of life support devices. And then the fiber, uh, upgrade, which will replace old my, mo- multi-mode fiber with single-mode fiber to increase the bandwidth that the county desperately needs. So I could turn it over to you guys, I just wanted to give you a little summary of what we were, um, looking to, uh, you know, accomplish with the A R P funding.
Thank you, Mr. James, Mr. Warren.
Yeah, Mr. James, this is, uh, Mr. Thornton. Uh, just two questions on that list, that totals over two point four million. First question, the pandemic response helped us support two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, could you explain that in more detail and, um, is that just this pandemic related? Or are we anticipating many more pandemics in the future or this one to go on for a long time? I'm just wondering that figure two hundred and fifteen thousand, what that is exactly with the pandemic response? And then second question, uh, the virtualization infrastructure upgrade is almost a million dollars. Uh, a lot of money right there in the package. And I'm wondering what exactly we're getting for that million-dollar item?
Yeah, uh, of, of course, um, so, uh, first and foremost, I hope, uh, to God that we don't have to continue through more time through this pandemic. Um, but I will say that the county only has one help desk technician for the entire, um, for the entire show, so we have a large, larger number of work from home, uh, in, uh, staff members now, uh, coming from departments that never worked from home. We have a large number of laptops that have been deployed, there are, um, uh, uh, laptops, printers, um, there's remote access support, there's after-hours support. Even with council, there's support for, um, for Zoom support. I mean, we, we have, um, the team here, uh, running the, the meetings, the hybrid meetings, uh, every single one of them. Um, so the added support, the help desk support, pandemic response help desk support is needed, um, for that overflow. Um, the help desk is now almost five hundred tickets behind. There are an influx of tickets from, uh, thirty to forty every other day. And like I said, we have one county help desk employee and we have two county courts help desk employees. In which they are separated to work on the courts matters first and then if time allows, they're able to work on county matters. So to answer your question, I'm hoping that this pandemic, uh, support ends soon. But it's something we, we, we definitely need, we definitely need it to move forward. Especially when there's ever-changing things like right now where we're on restricted access to, to the county buildings. Uh, that means there's more of a work, uh, workforce from home. And, uh, you know, they can't do it without support. Um, now the Dell system, um, that's what I was talking about earlier with regards to, um, the end of life in, in October. There is a three-month lead time which we are very close to going over. And it's a nine-month project. It is end of life and I know it's, it might be hard to, to take end of life, I, I don't want it to sound like I'm, I'm backing everyone into a corner, but end of life is exactly what it sounds like. There is no more support from Dell, there are no more parts replacements, there are no more security updates and we rely on that every day, twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five. In order for the county to move forward technologically, safely, um, without vulnerabilities, without, um, uh, you know, any outages or things like that, we need to move with equipment like this. Uh, so, for instance, when we need to do a New World update, which is vital for the county's finances, we have to shut down other systems because the system, when we upload or when we update New World, can't handle it. That's going to continue to get worse and worse until we're left at end of life. We don't want to piecemeal projects a- and equipment together like we've been doing. Um, we don't want to buy, uh, gray equipment because sometimes they have a limited, uh, uh, support life and, um, you know, it, it's, it's, it's the right step in the right direction. Um, I know that's a, it's a big price tag at the end of that, that line. But it also comes with training as well. Um, a- and, and that's for the entire I T department. We move from, uh, from V M M over to, uh, uh, V M ware. Uh, so I, I mean, it's, uh, it's vital.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Vellavich?
Uh, I have a question, um, if it wasn't for the ARPA funds, when would you have come to us for this funding information? Because, I mean, if, if we had multi-year pre-planned end of life expectancy from three, four years ago, we would have already known that we needed this. Why is this just coming to council now?
That, uh, it's coming to council now because, uh, I'm just getting the information to you. Uh, you know, by way of history, these demands were made, uh, during budget season, uh, and, uh, maybe prior to budget season, uh, but I was not made aware of, uh, any of these issues until October. Uh, of twenty twenty. No, it doesn't, and that's why I've been saying this, uh, and I will say it over and over and over again. The I T department, uh, needs to have a long-range strategic plan. The one division that has a long-range strategic plan is budget and finance. And but for our, uh, debt service, we're doing a really, really good job here in Luzern County. And part of that is because we have a long-range plan, we have a budget and finance office that's on top of things and the administration historically has worked with council. Uh, and council has worked with the administration to make sure that we tick off all the. And council has worked with the administration to make sure that we tick off all the items on the strategic plan. That's what I T needs, and we will be developing that. But at this point, we have to have some, some confirmation that there's going to be funding out there available to the I T department to purchase and use a proper software and hardware. That's all this, this is about. And I said it before, and I'll say it again, we will keep council apprised as to all the vendors, the contract, and what it's used for. If monies aren't used, we will return it back to the A R P fund.
Yes, Mr. James, the last item on the list is the mail-in ballot scanner. Could you explain how that works?
I can explain that. And part of it came out of, there was a conference on Monday, Monday sponsored by C cap and the Department of State. And this particular, and they spoke about this. And even prior to the, this conference, we were exploring the possibility of getting a machine that can open the ballots, segregate the ballots, scan the ballots into the shore system. We don't have that capability. We have two machines that open ballots. And then we have to unfold them and, and then we have to manually, you know, scan them in. This particular piece of equipment will reduce the, the amount of time that the actual ballots are in somebody's hands, and it will be more efficient. We will not have to have as many outside employees come in, in the ballot processing process. So that's, that was, and was added on basically because it was also discussed at this conference. The Department of State is, is going to, I'm going to say upgrade, but they are making changes to the shore system. And this particular machine will be compatible with that and make the processing of the mail-in ballots more, not only more efficient, but cleaner.
Okay, are the ballots barcoded?
Yes, there are, there are codes for the ballot. There's, there are security codes. Ballots are, there are, there are codes and there are marks on the ballot for security purposes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm looking at like the one page to ninety-three and I sixty-three. Pull the page out because under Adobe licensing under page ninety-three, I've got forty thousand. You have fifty thousand on the one page. Once again, these are the details that I think, you know, you just mentioned strategic plan. I think it should have been referred to committee so we can actually sharpen the pencil off them with these numbers. You know, assistance with Windows ten, twenty, H two upgrade. Most of the time, these upgrades are automatic upgrades that come down on your computer. You simply click down in the lower right-hand corner, reboot the machine, let it sit for a half an hour, forty-five minutes in some cases, and it's done automatically for you. But I don't know why you have to spend twenty-five thousand dollars to do something like that. I do it for free at work. I mean, that's quite honest, you know. You've got a forty thousand versus fifty thousand on the Adobe licensing. Mail-in ballot scanner shouldn't even be under the I T ask. It probably should be under the election jurors asks. I don't know why it's even coupled in with this particular issue. The data center badge reader, that's a scanner. Wouldn't that fall under the sheriff's department as far as a badge reader? Because don't they control all the access in the entire like complex of all the buildings? So I mean, some of these things need to be parsed out. I'm looking at the one part here. You still have four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars listed for virtual meeting support. I think anybody here in their right mind would do the job for a half a million dollars to post our meetings. Some of these asks are ridiculous. I mean, others, just because some things end up like, I used, we have Dell A I X. You know, hard drives at work. We have a company out of Philadelphia that has a four-hour lead time. So one of the hard drives fails, they drive up a hard drive. Or they actually send me to, I have one hot swappable sitting in my office. Like you simply just take it out in two minutes, swap it out, and they'll send me another drive next day. Without having the gentleman have to come up from Philadelphia to, and that technology is end of life and it's working just fine. You know, you say you're going to get training on this stuff. You're going to put a system in that nobody knows anything about, then get trained out after it gets put in. Who's putting it in? Consultants? How much are we going to be paying for them? You know, so there's so many questions. I wish this would be referred back to committee. We could sharpen the pencil. I don't disagree with you that we need to come up with a game plan. But is this the right game plan at this right time? You knew this stuff was coming down the pipe. I think we took capital money back in twenty sixteen for server virtualization. We obviously didn't plan it five years ago till now. So it is a problem, and I think that's what the strategic initiatives committee should be for. And we go out and break out with, with the breakout session, have public invited, all of us, or at least on the strategic initiatives committee can talk about it, sharpen the pencil. You don't need it today. It's not critical today. It could happen two weeks from now that we allocate the money. But let's have a meeting in between there to hash out these differences, sharpen the pencil, clear up these numbers so that they're correct. And then put things in their appropriate areas that they belong in. Because I don't really think a mail-in ballot scanner belongs to I T unless you're, you know, is that, now you're talking chain of custody on the election side and security. Do you really, I wouldn't want to be that I T person touching a mail-in ballot scanner if I was doing it. That, I think, you know, because you have to be sworn in under, under the board of elections. So, you know, let's, let's parse a couple of these things out and actually sharpen the pencil, send it back to strategic planning. Come back in two weeks and then we'll talk about how much money you need.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. So we have a motion and a second for item number six.
I'd like to make one comment. First of all, you know, this is I T, and I think, I think it was Mr. Newman who spoke pretty much about the I T department. And I think all of us here in this room understand that in today's world, the I T department takes much of what goes on. And if we don't have our I T department up to the standards, we're putting ourselves in jeopardy in a lot of different ways besides security. So if we don't support the I T department and the needs of the I T department, that's fine. Just remember when we have an issue, when something fails, we have a software issue, hardware, end-of-life, whatever it might be, that we didn't support. We didn't provide the opportunity and funding necessary. I have no problem, you know, we're allowing them that money. If there's items on here that need to be reviewed, certainly ask for that review. And then, you know, it's not necessary this time. Take that money and put it back into funds. But we have to support the I T department if we expect it to be successful here. Thank you.
I have a question myself. I'm in favor of moving forward with this because I think it's vitally important. I think we'll be sitting here for the next four months if I can manage it. And I could appreciate all of Mr. Urban's comments, and I greatly appreciate those. But if we don't start now and hopefully get this finished in nine months, I think we're going to be in big trouble. I mean, have to run down and change water on the B five. Like what, what year are we in? It's kind of bizarre when I heard that, but I'm just speaking out loud. And I'll also say that I did reach out because I had a lot of concerns with this whole program with Romilda today. And I got to tell you, she did a very good job explaining how she came about getting quotes, the actions she had taken, and I was very happy and felt more comfortable. And I suggest if anybody going forward has those same questions, pick up the phone and call her, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to just make one comment. I definitely would support moving forward with this today. But after reading that C cap assessment, I definitely think that in the future, and, you know, we know we're going to be getting more federal money at some point. I would like to see a lot of meaningful change happen in the I T department for me to vote on anything in the future. But today I do know that most of this stuff is, is pretty necessary, so I'm happy to support.
No.
Joe Scavagage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Dermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Ms. Rayo?
Yes. Motion to adopt resolution authorizing use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to make repairs in Luzern County Correctional Facility. And we have a first and a second. I believe Mr. Rakovich is on the line to speak to this.
Yes, Director Rakovich is on, and I believe he has some staff members on if there's any particular questions. Mark, do you want to address the items that you're requesting?
Yes, thank you, members of council. The first item which we are requesting is the fire panel system inside the correctional facility. The cost of that is five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. The current system that we have in the correction facility is out of date. What is installed is a Honeywell panel that was built for John's control system. No one will support this product as it is approximately twenty-two years of age. It has been passing the annual inspection, but honestly barely. We have been getting it, we have not been getting it serviced, only testing of the entire system. The system is monitored twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week by staff. And if we cannot have the opportunity to have the A R P funding, we would have to ask for a capital project funding for this project. If we can get council's approval for some, we're hoping that we can have this panel updated, replaced by the end of twenty twenty-two. This panel is what controls all of the fire alarms inside of our correctional cell. The second project that we're looking for is the replacement of the two elevators inside the cell. We are asking for three hundred thousand dollars out of the A R P funds for the elevators. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is in the capital project budget. However, we would need an additional three hundred thousand to complete two elevator replacements. When getting the bids, all three of the vendors that looked at it said that it would be more cost-effective to do all of the work at once, at one time instead of only one elevator at a time. Those costs are as of July twenty-first, July twenty twenty-one. What we did in the, in the past with the repairs on the elevator were to ensure its safety or just continual running of the, of the machine. Between twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, we did spend approximately two hundred thousand dollars to ensure the safety of all the gives were replaced, all of the guides inside, the doors were replaced. We actually had two elevator doors replaced. We had the cable liners installed. So these are extremely expensive machines for us to operate. Last year, our elevators made over one million that we have inside there. And those are used to transport food to every floor, et cetera. The panels as of late, they cannot just replace one of our control panels that we need that operate it. What they actually do is they will shut the elevator down for approximately three or four months, take the old panel out and try to repair it. We've had it down for four months. They sent it out to be repaired. They bring that new panel back in, and it's not working the day that they install it. They have to resend that out again. Elevators are the lifeline in our facility. As you can imagine, trying to take a ambulance stretcher up nine or seven flights of steps in a tight quartered area is very difficult. So we are asking for that additional three hundred thousand. What that will do is replace all of the lift mode, the controls, the boards, the door operators, the keypad system, and the call system for each floor. The final request we're looking is the roof repair. There was a question regarding, well, that roof was repaired in twenty sixteen. There was, there were roof repairs made in twenty sixteen. That was on the rubber roof. The new rubber roofing was put down over the institution with rocks. However, what the problem now is, is the parapet wall. So it's not the flat section of the walls. It's the part that protrudes up from the flat additional foot and a half to two. There, the mortar inside those are deteriorating, starting to crumble, and the water is weeping its way into. Other than that, if there was any question about any of the projects that we're requesting funding for, I'd be more than happy to.
Yes, Mr. Radovich, Brian Thornton here. On the replacement of the elevators, it was hard to understand some of what you said. Did you state there was three hundred thousand earmarked in the capital budget already?
Three hundred and fifty thousand, sir.
So, and then you're seeking another three hundred thousand year from the A R P funds?
Correct.
Now, I think early today I was reading, I think around four A M, the Otis elevator quote. I think it was about four hundred and eighty thousand. Was that for both elevators, I think?
The Otis elevator one? I don't believe that it was. I believe they're.
I mean, one, one of them was, I think, closer to six hundred thousand, the other quote. But I think the Otis one was four eighty, two forty each. And I'm wondering if three, something you said was already allocated. Bringing up the four eighty, I don't think there'd be a necessity for another three hundred thousand unless I misread something.
Oh, I know that our county engineer has opened the figures on it. And I was told that the total project would be six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, hence the request for the three hundred thousand. From what I saw.
I remember. Okay, Cone, the Cone Company Elevators and Escalators were six hundred and fifty-four thousand for both elevators. And flipping over to Otis. Four hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred dollars. Page twelve of thirteen I'm looking at.
Are these two, are these two separate? Because I see a quote from Otis on the control system. That one's two forty, and then I see another one of the two oh three. So are they?
I, I don't know. Are they all bidding on the same thing? I don't know.
One looks like it's on the control system, and they call them both are.
Yeah, I just, I'm a little confused just on the light item. Three hundred thousand. I mean, otherwise, I'm all for upgrading the very, very old prison because I understand now there's some serious safety concerns. And there's some dangerous possibility, things that could happen over there. One, of course, being the elevator. We, we all know what happened in the past with one elevator. So I just questioned in the figures, that's all.
Mark, is Val on that he can speak to what the different items that are necessary for, for the elevator repairs?
Yes, I do believe Val is.
Val, are you on?
Yes, I am on, Romilda.
Please introduce yourself to council and tell council exactly what you do other than keeping the prison as safe and secure as possible.
I'm Val Tomanti. I, I more or less run the maintenance department for the director at the prison. I was involved in those quotes. And if I'm not mistaking, the difference in the quote is whether or not we are keeping the lifting mechanism as compared to installing a new one. That was the big, the big difference with the Otis quote. a new one. That was the big, the big difference with the Otis quote. That is, that is what I'm understanding, from what I remember when I, when we were doing it.
Right. And do you want to explain what the lifting mechanism is? I know, you know, there may be some members of council that understand that, but not everybody.
The lifting mechanism is the item that drives the elevator up and down the shaft. Basically, it's, it's your hoist. It's, that, that's exactly what it is. It's the hoist. And that does your lift, and that makes your, your equipment run up and down smoothly. We've been having problems in the past. As recently as two weeks ago, we had to wait for parts to come in, because the hoists are very old and they wear parts out very quickly. And it took a few days to get the parts in, so we could get the elevator back in service.
So, the, are you suggesting the Otis quote is, does not include the lifting mechanism?
Um, I'm not sure which quote they put in. I know there were two Otis quotes. One was for, with the lifting mechanism, one was without the lifting mechanisms. So I'm not sure which quote we are looking at here in the, in your, on your, your overview.
Without the lifts. Because the, when, when they're going to replace those lifts, they have to actually bring in a crane that's capable of putting them on the seventh story of our prison on the roof. And then there, when we say lifts, there are motors that are capable of driving those elevators up and down. So the Otis quote did not include that.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sure.
Yes.
Again, again, Director and, and Council, I apologize. But if I remember correctly, there were two quotes from Otis, and one modernization quote was just changing out the controls and keeping the old lifts. And the second quote was changing all the equipment, all the, the lifts and the controls that operate everything. So I'm not sure which, which quote made it into your proposal here.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Yes, Mr. Rakovich.
Yes, sir.
Um, seems to me we're spending an awful lot of money on these elevators. I get it. We need to have it function. If we're going to spend an extra 300,000, are we going to have a completely functioning elevator? Parts aren't going to break off. It's not old. It's like a new elevator. Is it going to work? That's the most important part. It seems we never, we never get the elevators working consistently.
And that is exactly why we're looking for the additional money. We've replaced, in the old lifts, we've replaced seals because they've been leaking money. I can't verify this. I do know that the lifts are at least from 1986. And when they were there replacing the seals, they said that these were probably used lifts when they were put into our facility. Well, they said they dated back from the 1960s until the early 80s, when they were installing that form of lift in our facility. I think if we do replace the, the entire package as it was presented to us, we should probably be able to get another 15 to 20 years out of these with limited repairs and maintenance costs.
If, if I could just interject, you know, if council is concerned, we can actually put out new bids. But, you know, you can see by the information that we have what the general cost is going to be. So, could put it in the resolution, or you can take my word that we will do, we'll rebid the whole thing and provide the information to council.
Thank you, Manager Crocomo.
I mean, I probably would suggest rebid the entire project between Otis and the other company, Cone. You know, if you're going to do it, do it right the first time. The other thing is, is build in some type of service contract, so you're not paying for parts in the future, should even the new list break. There's no guarantee that these parts are going to, to work right, even in the new, in an older structure. Quite honestly, too, you know, I would also check at this point in time, too, with these companies, with the supply chain problems, what's their lead time on getting replacement parts, should one of the new parts break, to see which one has a better track record on being able to do a repair job sooner rather than later, should one of, even if something go down. So, I mean, you know, once again, this is, this is something that should have been planned out long term. You know, you, you basically got the gift course, which is the, the American Rescue money. But all of this stuff should have been thought about many years ago. I mean, it's to have a fire system that's 22 years old, it's kind of ridiculous, too. I mean, we, we gave out capital money probably about five years ago, and that should have been probably something addressed at that time during that bond issue. I mean, and we could have refinanced it today, but, you know, I, I think, it, it seems like it's a systemic problem within the county, that none of the division heads seem to have long term goals or long term planning goals, that, you know, if you didn't have this money today, what would you do? When were you going to tell us the truth that this stuff is so deficient that you need additional money to fix it? Because we didn't hear, I mean, I haven't, I've been on this council for a couple of years, second time around, didn't hear any of this discussion. You know, I mean, this is the whole reason, I think some of this needs to go back to the Strategic Initiatives Committee, so we can hash out these differences. It's not that I don't want to see the county move forward or sign anything, but I need to justify it to the taxpayers of this county, and, and we all need to do that. And we all need to have a good vision for this county and make sure everything gets fixed properly. The proper service contracts are in place, we can get the parts in the future that add, you know, fairly fast pace if something breaks, so things aren't down. Yeah. I don't have a problem buying a Cadillac if it's going to work, but we need some guarantees. You can't just ask for money, throw it up in the air and expect everything to work magically, because somebody's got to put it in.
Thank you. We have a, so we have a motion and a second for the resolution authorizing the use of our funds to make repairs at the correctional facility. We have a roll call, Miss Lawrence.
Mr. Ray, before we go to that, please, if I may, first of all, as we all know, and I think Mr. Thornton has said many times already, our prison is quite old, has certain efficiencies that we probably cannot correct because of the way the building is structured, et cetera. But we have an obligation to provide a safe and secure facility for the inmates, but also for our staff, visitors, and whoever else may be part of that. I sat here that night in July and listened to the whole situation, their unfortunate accident. I knew a young man who passed away, his family. They were all really great people. It's a sad, sad commentary. Unfortunately, the elevator was involved in that particular situation. We did some things to correct it at that point in time, but I think everybody knew the elevators were not up to the standard that we should have. We have two elevators here in this courthouse that we have fixed and refurbished and put in new, and they have operated very well for about six to 10 years at this point. This is something I think is a very necessary project. It's something that is an obligation, I feel, the county has to make sure that this is done right, secure, safe for all peoples involved. And as far as the monies are in the capital plan and American Rescue monies, you know, if there's monies left behind after the project's been completed, our capital plan is not that much. We have a little bit over a million dollars in that. And everybody here in this room knows that if we have a major problem with some of our facilities, a million dollars is not going to go very far. So that money could certainly go back to the capital plan and help us replenish that. I think without question, we should be supporting these types of projects. American Rescue Funds, we're very fortunate that we're able to have this type of money. Otherwise, we'd be looking at building our capital plan. The only way we really could build it would be through taxation. So, with that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. I agree, we have an obligation to keep our employees safe at the correctional facility, and I urge council members here who have not taken Mr. Rakovich up on his offer to tour the, the prison. I think that that is a really good opportunity for you guys to see what, what improvement fees we made there, in addition to just what we have in front of us today. So, has any other comments? Roll call? Phil Scavitch?
Yes.
Phil Lardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
I'm abstaining on this one, just because I think we need to go back and redraw the plan.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Number eight, motion to adopt resolution authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan funds for the inspection of the Water Street Bridge.
Good evening, Members of Council. Fred Rosenkrantz here.
I'm sorry, we don't have a motion yet. Is there a motion for agenda item number eight?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Mr. McGinley, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Perry.
One more question.
We have a, do you want to answer? Do you want to wait? They're going to speak on it? Okay. Is it Mr. Fleisch that's on?
No, we, we have Fred Rosenkrantz, who I will introduce as the Acting Director of Operations. Fred?
Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Crocomo. Good evening, Members of Council. Fred Rosenkrantz, I'm the interim Operational Division Head, Operational Services Division Head as of 11 days ago, also remaining as the 911 Director, and I look forward to working with each member of council moving forward. On the agendas, a request to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to utilize up to $750,000 for a needed Water Street Bridge inspection. From what I understand, this is the next logical step in the process to allow a well-informed decision for administration and council moving forward for the fate of this bridge. I have Mr. Fleisch, the current county engineer, who has a very well-versed background in the history of this bridge. I know that many meetings have been held regarding this bridge up till tonight, putting this funding request on there. And I just want to point out that the main reason why we're asking for up to $250,000 is we have a budgetary quote from a Penda Preferred Consultant. They're one of the only ones that are in the area and willing to do this work. We sought several other proposals. It's a very in-depth review and, and looking at this bridge. It's not just a simple process. There, it's a very in-depth process, and I cannot allow Larry Fleisch to expand on that. If council has any additional questions, I'll defer to him as the subject matter expert on this. Mr. Fleisch?
Yes, yes, I'm here. This is County Engineer Lawrence Fleisch. Any additional questions in regards to the study that we're requesting?
Mr. Fleisch, Kevin LeScavage, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we had a few more companies involved and given us pricing on this. I did a little research. I did find a company today, and they're out of New Cumberland, PA.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part.
All right, there's a company in New Cumberland, PA, and I was wondering if we could reach out to them to borrow and write. They are Penda approved online.
It's not as simple as just being Penda approved. There are several companies and firms that are Penda qualified. Our bridge inspection firm contracted through Penda is Panoni. They are, are selected, five-year contract under Penda's guidelines for selection. The other firm that we could use is Alfred Benish and Company. They are also under contract with the county through the Penda selection process. They, I asked them for a quote, and their current workload said they did not want to give us a proposal at this time. I also reached out to Penda's consultant, who did the study for the replacement rehab or removal of the bridge. McTish and Uncle, they did not want to complete the additional part of that inspection. So Panoni was the only person, firm, that gave us a, a dollar amount. And more than willing to look for somebody else, but in order to do that, Penda would have to provide me with the selection. So I can't just ask anybody. I have to go through Penda to get that answer.
So, could we move in that direction and see if this firm's available?
Well, we can, but just let you know, the process does take quite a while. Penda comes back in.
Well, the firm's been closed for a few months, and we can't use it, so I don't think there's a hurry.
It, it's not.
We will, we will, we will reach out to other firms.
Thank you. I think Councilman Schnee has a comment.
Yes, Mr. Fleisch, how old is this brick?
Uh, over 100 years.
In your expertise, when there's $750,000 into bridge cleaning and special inspection, it's just this throwing money out the window?
My engineer experience of the last 25 years plus tells me that you could spend $700,000 on the cleaning and in-depth inspection and get a specific load posting dollar amount or a load rating for the bridge, which will be a lot less than what it currently is right now. But the answer is, it still may be keep the bridge closed. So you have to spend $700, $700,000, and it came up to the same conclusion that we're currently at. It would be, my personal opinion, would be better spent, just table the money and push for the replacement and get the answer from Penda in which direction they're going with their bridge, put it that way. But the process would be, in order to satisfy municipalities and anybody else who uses the bridge, this is the next step in that process. So, again, at the end of the day, your answer still may be, bridge closed. Or it could be reopen at three tons for traffic, for car traffic only. Me personally, I don't see that happening. I see it keeping it closed would be the most experienced step for a bridge that's a trust, you know, over 100 years old, and the condition it's in. And if, there's several, way too many pins and I bars and bearings that are in poor condition to say, oh, we just cleaned it. We could tell, these look like the same pins we looked at a year ago. It's not getting any better. It's only going to get worse. I don't see it. My personal opinion, but.
So, bottom line is, you're saying the 750 is going out the window?
That's my.
Is that what you said?
That's my personal opinion, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Fleisch, this is Mr. Thornton, and I, I just wanted to say here, there's four council people sitting here that live right next to that bridge on either side of it, and were terribly inconvenienced every day. Backups are enormous, because there's only one bridge in use. But even so, I'm just wondering what the end game is here? What's the strategy? So, back in the summer, I understand the DOT inspected it, maybe I'm wrong, and, and someone deemed it that it needed to be closed. It wasn't safe. So it's been closed since. Has had an enormously negative impact on the local economy, small businesses on both sides of the river, because people just won't travel in that region and sit in long lines of traffic waiting to get over the one surviving bridge. So I'm wondering, we had an inspection then, it was deemed unsafe. What's the end game with this inspection? What are we hoping to achieve down the road? If it comes back the same, we spent $750,000 to hear, yeah, it's not safe, you cannot open it. Or is there a possibility that this inspection would reveal that, well, you know, if you make this million or $2 million repairs, you could open it with a weight limit and have lighter traffic on the bridge? Is that a possibility, in your opinion, as the engineer?
Uh, yes, i- i- it's, it's a possibility. Yes, it's a possibility. I just see it as very unlikely.
And if I, if I may just interject here, members of council, if I just may interject, taking over 11 days ago, I had a conversation with Larry about this earlier today, and it's our intent to get that answer for you, Mr. Councilman, to answer your question directly. This study is the next logical step. Not that we're throwing good money to bad, but we can't move to the next step. Larry Flech is not going to close down the bridge or say that it's structurally inefficient or deficient to open it up for a weight limit change or possibly open it up with repairs. So to answer your question directly, sir, this is the next logical step. I know it seems like a lot of money, but to give us the answers we need to either say we could open it up with a weight limit, or we need to tear it down and get a new bridge, this study will help us with that. It's much more in-depth study, and that's from what I understand, taking over 11 days ago.
If we don't do, if we don't do the inspection and the study, then you're making a decision tonight or, you know, soon, about the fate of that bridge. You know, my recommendation is that we do the study. I think the people in the area around that bridge deserve answers. And if there is a possibility, possibility to salvage that bridge, I think we need to allow that to play out so that we have all our options.
And if I just may add, I was extremely pleased to see that Representative Matt Cartwright mentioned that this bridge is expected to be on the state's federal infrastructure money. So again, without this study, even talking with the Community Development and Redevelopment Authority, there are federal dollars and state dollars that are going to be available for infrastructure for the West Nanaco Bridge. There's a lot of good opportunities for us. And again, I don't want to keep repeating myself, but it's not throwing good money to bad, in my opinion. I think it's the next logical and necessary step for us to make an informed decision. And I don't believe Larry Flech, as the county engineer, would feel comfortable making that decision without this study.
Mr. Rosenkrantz, it's Kendra Riedel. I'm wondering if, are you saying that if we don't do a study such as this one, that it'll take us out of the running for infrastructure dollars?
I can't be certain, but I know, just talking to Mr. Riley in the Redevelopment Authority today, there will be future loan borrowings through his office. There's $3 million earmarked out of the LSA funding moving forward for the next 10 years. So there's going to be a lot of good opportunities, and I feel at this point, and I believe the county manager feels strongly about this as well, that this is, this study is necessary for us to get a good in-depth analysis of that bridge so we can make a well-informed decision on whether we could rehab it, open it up with a weight limited access for now, or really focus our efforts on moving forward with the Northeast delegation on getting the monies necessary to replace that bridge, working with PENDA and the state officials.
I can't explicitly state that it would eliminate us from any other funding, but it would send a very, very loud message that Luzerne County is not going to support the opening of the bridge at all, or anything with the bridge if we don't even want to do the inspection.
I agree. I mean, as Mr. Thornton said, I live by the bridge. I see the traffic up there. It's very inconvenient to have one bridge in that section, but I just, I just don't see how, if we're, you know, possibly getting these infrastructure dollars to repair or replace the bridge, why we're going to spend this large amount of money on the inspection if it's not necessary to get that funding to just repair the bridge. It seems like it's going to be a study that's going to just tell us what we already know. That's just my opinion. I think that Mr. Lombardo had a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, like Kendra Riedel and Mr. Thornton said, you know, several of us live by that bridge. I live on the street directly after the next bridge, over the concrete bridge, and I'm terribly inconvenienced every single day around rush hour, in the morning and the evening, getting to my house. So this is extremely important to me personally, but just looking at the, you know, the price tag here and then what the potential, what the potential result is going to be, I just have a lot of questions. Particularly on the Phase II, the bridge clearing, that's almost half a million dollars. Can somebody explain a little bit more about what that entails?
Sure. The bridge cleaning in of itself is going to have to have a containment system underneath the center spans of the bridge. You'll have a lift, underbridge lift truck, providing personnel down there. They're going to clean off every bit of rust that's on the pins and the I bars to determine the amount of section loss on all the metal. Simply stated, if they'd say the diameter of the pin was three inches, they clean off all the pack rust, and now they determine the diameter of that pin is only two and a half inches or two inches. The cleaning entails hand tools, hammering, pack rust removal, all of that for the center span pins and I bars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Urban?
When Joe Givens was the engineer back in the day, they used to talk about x-raying the bridge. Why can't you do that today with today's technology, instead of having to go down there with handles, look at it in a different way? That technology exists to check the abutments, the pins, and all that other stuff. So can you, can you look at something that's a little bit more advanced than hammers and tools? That's a little bit more advanced, because, I mean, that was talked about years ago, that they do x-raying, and I don't think it would cost $750,000 to x-ray a bridge or the equipment. Just looking at it from a different approach.
There's, ultrasonic testing was completed on the bridge through the MCTISH-Kunkel study from PENDA. They did a limited areas when they did their ultrasonic testing. They have x-rays that take certain areas. For this trust bridge in particular, this is the only, to my knowledge, the only plan of action is to remove the pack rust and determine the sections of the I bars and the pins.
And, you know, I do thank you for giving me some of the information today. However, it's all from 2012 and prior. Wasn't, was that bridge not inspected in the last 10 years? Because everything from prior to that was done on an annual basis. So why didn't I get, like, the newest stuff first and the oldest stuff second?
The bridge wasn't inspected every year. There are some interim inspections that were done in six months. There was also a special inspection done a couple of years ago. All that information is available through PENDA and on our, in our office. If you need it, I will provide it for you.
Right. I mean, I've got a big package in the council room, because I know, you know, some of it can't be disclosed under law. But what you gave me is from 10 years ago and not relevant really to today. It was not the last, like, from 2021 and prior, the last couple of years, where it's more relevant than, you know, what went on 10 years ago. I did want history on it, but I would assume that you'd go back from most current to oldest, instead of oldest to 2012. So that really doesn't help me to make any type of decision.
Mr. LaScavag?
I live in West Pitts, of course, and my comment is, I don't think two weeks to hold off to see if we can get better pricing on that inspection. I just have a hard time sitting here thinking they could spend $750,000, almost a million dollars, to tell you a bridge that they're in Tulsa is no good, it is 114 years old, that something's going to magically change. So I have an issue with that. So I would like to seek out some other companies to see if they could, if they came in and said $250,000, $300,000, I'd probably be all ears. $750,000, I'm kind of not feeling so good about it.
Do we have a definite answer that we would not get infrastructure money to replace this? We don't have a definite answer?
So there could be no pot at the Rainbow Report.
Thank you for your comments. So we have a motion and a second for agenda item number eight. They have a roll call, Mr. Lawrence.
Could I make the motion that we table it for two weeks?
Yeah.
Until Manager Crocamo said she would seek out some other bound quotes or proposals?
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second to table. No further discussion. A roll call to table.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinley?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavag?
Yes.
Mr. Riedel?
Yes. Tabled. Number nine, motion to adopt ordinance placing a question on the May 17, 2022 primary ballot. I'm asking Luzerne County Home Rule Charter.
For move. Thornton.
Like, make an amendment on, just one bit of language to insert it, the word "to." I have two. Okay, council, if everybody directs the CBA, at least they do, they've noticed. Word "to" in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, I have a question.
I think, I think it's the same.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah. I have a question on this for the Office of Law. So part of it reads that this gives council the opportunity to hire our own solicitor if we see fit, which, I mean, we've done that in the past, and that's, that was the premise that I thought this was on. But does this exclude counsel from using the Office of Law?
Well, I sent a copy of legal opinion on the entire proposed ordinance. There, in addition to what Councilman Urban just corrected with the language, I guess it was a typo, there are ser, serious considerations on this. One being, I believe, that Councilman Urban had made it to be, the ordinance must be provided to the Bureau of Elections by a certain date that's not outside the 15-day period. There were a number of other issues, but it, the ordinance as it's worded is confusing. I don't know if council did get a copy of what was sent over.
Yes.
And again, I apologize that it just went out this morning, but we did not do the analysis. Councilman Urban had presented, the ordinance did not ask for legal review until you, I believe, you asked last week. So as far as the specifics, I believe Mr. Cross, who was with the Pennsylvania Economy League, who was involved with the Government Study Commission originally, the last time that this proposal was made, if I'm not mistaken, he came on during the public comment period. He had indicated that these few words of change to the Luzerne County Charter that was approved by the electorate of Luzerne County, that these few words would have a profound change, actually on the form of government. The section that's specifically being amended, in addition to referring to the Office of County Council, which is not defined nor mentioned anywhere else in the charter and is a term that actually makes no sense. That section that refers to the creation of what is the Office of Law indicates both in the first section of that, that specific subsection, as well as the last, that the Office of Law is the, Luzerne County is the Office of Law's client. And to add those seven words that accepts out from what the charter language has provided as far as what the representation is by the Office of Law for Luzerne County is basically completely changing what the, what the charter intended as far as what the Office of Law's role would be in Luzerne County government. This is not a unique situation where, where a solicitor, a solicitor's office, or a single lawyer represents multiple branches of government. In school districts in Pennsylvania, a solicitor represents the specific school districts, represents the executive branch of government, which is represented by the school superintendent, and represents the legislative branch, which is the school board. As we have seen over the past number of years, certainly since I've been involved at all with, with the charter, under those circumstances, where the rules of professional responsibility require the lawyers from our office or our office as a whole to recuse themselves and have outside counsel appointed for, whether it's a branch of government or a department, that has actually taken place without, certainly without any argument from the Office of Law, and in fact, initiated by the Office of Law. And the most recent example was the situation between county council and the election board. Our office immediately recused itself. I had an encouraged and assisted council, county council, to choose legal counsel of their choosing and to be represented separately by that council. Neither I nor any member of the staff nor Shannon and Craig, the current acting solicitor, attended or were in any matters at all related to that action with county council or with the Election Bureau. So we also know throughout, certainly throughout the course of my being assigned to represent county council, that there have been many times where the Office of Law has given legal opinions. County council has a choice to take those opinions or not. There is absolutely no binding authority that's granted under the charter or otherwise to the Office of Law. And anytime, I know during my tenure as both acting chief and chief solicitor during Romilda's time, as well as during Attorney Pedri's time as chief solicitor, if there was ever a time where a majority of county council had requested an outside opinion from independent attorney, that request was certainly never denied. And that, I believe, is something that's absolutely permitted under the charter as the wording is now. The language of the ordinance, in addition to the, the language issues, which, which I cited in my, in my legal opinion with regard to reference to the Office of County Council, the whereas clause, clauses that lead into the recommended language are extremely confusing and actually imply, if you read through the whereas clauses and then read through the recommended amendment, almost imply that every member of council, as an elected member of county council, would be authorized to have their own independent attorney, which I believe is confusing to the electorate. I have absolutely no issue, and I believe I speak for Shannon as well, as far as having a, having this go through the proper process, which would include a complete and thorough examination of the Luzerne County Home Rule Charter, I have no issue with beginning the process to have a Government Study Commission impaneled and to have the entire document studied and determine whether, what effect changing, adding seven words to this single section could have on, on... could have on, on the government as a whole, but to have the the technical advisor who actually advised the Government Study Commission on how to on the actual form of government and the language come on, I believe it was the last time I was abso- I was not present, but I, I, he was on, I believe, last time during public comment period for the same exact proposed amendment, and said that this would be a profound change in the actual form of government. I don't think any more needs to be said than that, but there are other issues with the, with the language of the ordinance as it's written. Councilman Urban, I believe, corrected one of them, there was another section that referred to, I believe it was authorizing proper officials to execute paragraphs one through three, it should have said one through two. I believe that the dates that Councilman Urban had listed in the original proposed ordinance are absolutely undoable because ordinance does not become effective for a period of time after counsel would approve it anyway. So to make directives in the ordinance that require action before the ordinance becomes final, also, I believe, would be fatal. But I really believe it boils down to, this is something that requires a lot more review and discussion and understanding before it would just be thrown on the ballot, a few weeks before it's actually due to, before the deadline, is what we're, we're at now.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you for your spin, Vito. Quite honestly, in section A, though, you know, the Charter does specify for, for certain elected official, it does authorize like the controller and the D A can actually, and that's the whereas, you know, the where part, it does specifically authorize those two individuals to seek their own independent counsel, as long as they have a budget that they can go and hire their own attorney. Obviously, we don't usually give them of, of an adequate budget to go out and do that. So that's the part where the elected official is, counsel as, as one or person as one cannot make that determination just naturally, because we can't act on our, on behalf of ourselves as, as an entire, you know, process. So I think, you know, your, your comments are sort of wrong in that assessment of, of that particular section, so I think you need to go back and look at the Charter and, and look at where it does allow the D A, allows the controller to go out, hire independent counsel, as long as they have the money and the funding to do so. Counsel itself doesn't have that ability as, as a body at this point, and no single council member could take unilateral action, go and get our own independent legal review or legal counsel, you know that for a fact. You know, the dates could be corrected, that's just minor, we can make an amendment, I'd be glad to make the amendment to change three to say one through two, and then the February first, they change that to fifteen days from today, so other than that, I mean, really, it is something that's very important, you know, to, to this council, that we have our own independent review. There are many legal questions that, that I still have, you know, how is it that the manager holds two positions right now? Her name is still on the door of the Office of Chief Solicitor in this, in this one government. We confirmed her, our counsel, previous counsel confirmed her many years ago, but when you made her acting county manager, previous county, council major acting manager, they didn't take in consideration that she's holding two positions, and, and to me, you say you have an op-, you know, that you follow professional standards and, and look at conflicts of interest, but I think that's a huge conflict of interest, you know, so there are some questions that we have, and I think having our own counsel to review that would be wise, I mean, I, I sent this out more than a couple of weeks ago. You took the last minute to, to send this out on eleven twenty-eight this morning, when Ms. Rado asked to have this reviewed on Wednesday the nineteenth, the eighteenth, you know, it, it took a whole week to come back with just some simple, you know, it was only two pages, I think you had an adequate number of, or hours to look at it, you have enough attorneys on staff that could look at it, that could have potentially gave us a, a quick legal review of it, and some of the language I could have cleaned up in the meantime, but.
Mr. Urban, you want to make the motion to make those two amendments?
I want to make the motion to change the date from February first to fifteen days actually from today, right?
Could I respond?
Yeah, right. Right now, we have, we just so you're aware, we have a motion and a second to amend those two items, but go ahead, Attorney DeLuca.
First of all, Councilman Urban, I have asked you many times, if you have issues that need to be reviewed by the Office of Law, please submit them so we could rack of the fact that they were requested by us to review them, and that we would review them. I have to tell you, we have an issue with doing a quick legal review, because to be honest, you're one of the first that would jump all over us if there was an issue, because we did a quick legal review. That is not the way I practice law, that is not the way that we practice law now in, in the Office of Law. You never submitted it to us, you didn't request that we review it. Count, the council chair asked that we review it last week, and we did a review of it. We submitted this morning after we had a number of lawyers from the office review it, notice the obvious mistakes that, that would actually affect whether or not that ordinance was even something that could be effective to list the matter on, on the, on the ballot, and we also mentioned a number of other items that could create a very serious issue with the form of government as it is now. The language is confusing, I cited in the, in the opinion, the areas where you had prepared the, the ordinance, and it is confusing, anyone that would read it would be confused by it. The fact that the Controller's Office and the District Attorney under the Charter have the ability specifically that was approved by the voters of Luzerne County, that was recommended by the Government Study Commission, to be able to, in certain circumstances, secure outside counsel really has nothing to do with what you're asking in that ordinance. That ordinance is looking to exclude from representation of the Office of Law, who is directed under the terms of the Charter to rep- represent Luzerne County Government as a whole, that includes the executive and legislative branches. You added seven words that exclude the legislative branch from that directive without amending any of the other language that directs the Office of Law to consider Luzerne County as its client. You excluded the legislative branch by adding seven words without considering what effect those seven words would have on the entire section that deals with the Office of Law and the responsibilities of the Office to represent Luzerne County as a client. That's the issue, I'm not the first to bring it up, you are very well aware of the fact that Mr. Cross, who from the Pennsylvania Economy League, had commented on how this would be a profound change in the form of government. And as far as whether or not I'm putting spin on it, I basically just cited what the facts are as far as what effect this could have on the government. If counsel votes for it, for it, if the voters approve it, we'll end up having to deal with it. But anytime counsel, a majority of counsel has required an opinion from an outside attorney, that request has never been denied and never will be.
Thank you, Attorney DeLuca, we have a, we have a motion.
Quick question?
Sure.
Oh, back to Madam Chair Rado's question, because I got confused, Attorney Luke, I appreciate your answer before, earlier, but in the middle, I kind of got lost there a little bit. Now, she asked if this question, if this motion passes tonight, and the question is placed on the ballot in May, and let's say the voters of Luzerne County approve it for the council body here to hire their own solicitor, does that, based on the language of the ordinance, does that preclude the Office of Law or preclude us from using the Office of Law going forward?
It, first of all, it's, it's very poorly written, and what it, what the language indicates is that Luzerne Ca- that Luzerne County of Office of Law represents Luzerne County as a client, all the departments, all the boards, commissions, except for County Counsel.
So your answer would be yes, no, or maybe?
I have no idea, I didn't write it.
Okay.
No responsibility for it, but I have no idea what we'll do with it.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to make those two amendments.
Did someone read the amendments?
Yep, so we're changing the Part A, separate paragraph. We're going to change it to primary election, not later than Tuesday, wait, not Tuesday, we want it in February. Fifteen days from today? Well, from, from tomorrow, because it will be signed tomorrow. Fifteen?
Fifteen days from tomorrow? We run the test up there.
The test is when it'll be in effect, so that's the day you want it to also be transmitted?
Yes.
Okay, so it would change it to Thursday, February tenth. And then also, under Part A as well, number three, it says items one through three, it would be items one and two. So that is what the motion and the second are to amend on that, can we have a roll call on just the amendments?
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Mr. McGinnon?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Amen, yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes. Okay, so the amendment passes, we had a first and second for it, the way that it was, do we have a first? What, the first and second, if you want to keep that with the amendment?
I'll make the first motion.
I, I, yeah, I'll say, I, I'm sorry, I have one more question, that's okay.
Yeah.
I mean, if the Office of Law maybe want to comment on this, wouldn't it be helpful if we changed the seven words, the accept the Office of Luzerne County Counsel, and changed it to something, you know, more permissible where it says that, you know, we can have this solicitor, but that we can also be represented by the Office of Law, I'm not sure what that wording exactly would be, but would that be something that would be, you know, more acceptable?
It would absolutely be more acceptable, but I think that's the way it is now, you know, and that's, that's, I guess, the point I was making. Anytime a majority of counsel disagrees with the Office of Law, they're, and they have, there are many times, a majority of counsel has not agreed with an opinion in the Office of Law, and they just didn't follow it. Or in certain circumstances, when a, when an actual conflict arose, that we as lawyers are required to recognize pursuant to our rules of professional conduct, separate counsel was appointed for couns- for County Counsel and whatever other department was involved. So I guess my point is, that is, that is, would be an absolutely acceptable approach, but it, it's not even necessary, because as it stands, under the Charter, as the language is written now, that is exactly how the Office of Law has done business when it comes to this. You know, we can't have independent counsel appointed for, you know, one member of counsel who disagrees with everyone else on counsel. If a majority of counsel listens to an opinion of the Office of Law, disagrees with it, and would like an outside opinion, I've never known any of the, of the men or women who sat in the chair ever, ever deny that. So that is how we do business now, so it's not even really necessary.
Can I ask, Mr. Urban?
Sure.
Can you explain, you know, why you use this specific language, is there a reason for that?
Well, I mean, quite honestly, like, when you look at, look at the totality of the Office of Law right now, I mean, they're supposed to represent all authorities, boards, commissions and whatnot, but they don't, they honestly, you know, you have the separate retirement board attorney, anytime they, they feel they need to go out and hire an attorney, they just do it, you know, so when, when it's our turn to go out and do it, they're so against it. Quite honestly, there has been a lot of animosity toward the Office of Law, because it's, they get paid by the administration. So their bias seemingly is always toward, you know, the county, and, and kind of screw County Counsel. We're driving County Counsel, not County Counsel driving the policy of this county. You know, we were elected by the people to represent the people, and sort of drive the policies and procedures of this county, and what we see is the executive branch trying to dictate to County Counsel what they want, their demands, and we should just rubber stamp everything that they're saying, and I appreciate his spin on all of this, but quite honestly, I mean, Jerry Cross, too, is a contradictory person, down in Hazleton, they have an optional form of government. He, he stated that they should have their own council on there, city council, but why not here? I mean, we're kind of the only form of government, or one of the few counties that don't have our solicitor assigned specifically for us, and then how do you actually challenge them if they're both coming from the same administration, from the same office? You know, you're, you're gonna, I mean, we need to have that, that minor separation, just from a professional standpoint. And I think also, you know, we're, we're gonna write up ordinances and resolutions, we have to take something from nothing, basically, and build it here, County Counsel, if we have resolutions or ordinances, you know, if, if they're on some shindig somewhere, you know, on vacation or whatever, I'm not sitting around waiting for them to, to write something up, but I think we should have somebody on staff in, in our office. Behold, I think intent behind the Charter, too, with the Office of, of the Council, that was supposed to be an office, not an Office of Law, and God bless you, Sharon, because you're one person that does a lot of work for us, but if you ever got hit by a bus, I would hate to see what would happen to this county as a whole. I mean, because there has to be continuity in government all the time, we have to prepare, that's part of our planning here to, for emergencies. You know, if something happened to her, who's gonna jump at her spot? If we have our own attorney, they can clean up some of the ordinances, ordinances that we're proposing or resolutions that we're proposing. I'm not saying that they can't do a good job, but a lot of things, like today, we're going through this debate of over four hundred pages of information that was dropped in our lap three days ago, and how are all of us supposed to make an informative, diligent, impactful decision on behalf of all those residents out there that listen to us every two weeks? This is why I said, you know, take some of this out, let's have a breakdown session at home. You know, I, I contacted all of you to reach out to, you know, legitimately, to, to say, hey, here's an olive branch, let's, let's work on these problems, these are challenges that Luzerne County has. This doesn't have to be a kangaroo court by a single time here, and it's not supposed to be filled with animosity for each other, is, and it's not me against all of you, against me, it's, it's about good government, making sure that we have our eyes dotted, our teeth crossed, leaving our, you know, jays crossed and dotted as well. You know, we need our own.
I'm sorry.
And, and I think, you know, he could put all the spin as he wants, but he has multiple solicitorships everywhere. You know, I think we need somebody that's dedicated on staff, here as County Counsel, he has multiple solicitorships all over the place. We need somebody to actually just focus on us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Willoughby?
I just had a quick thing, too, I mean, if, say we need an independent counsel five times a year, I mean, should we pay one counsel for the whole year, or should we pay it five separate times, we have to pay each individual time we go for outside councils, is that correct? Mr. DeLuca?
I, I, since I've been here, I think the last time certainly was the issue with the Election Board. Prior to that, I don't remember the last time we counsel, a majority of counsel, certainly Mr. Urban has had his, his issues with opinions from the Office of Law with his, with the executive branch, with the majority of counsel, with other council members, but I don't remember the last time before the Election Board issue that that was a thing. The bottom line is, this ordinance as it's written, carves out.
Mr. DeLuca, that wasn't my question, what was the? Mr. DeLuca, that wasn't my question. What would the cost be involved if we were to go out for independent council?
I I it depends. We would, we would engage. Last time, county council went out on its own and engaged council on its own. So actually
So we would have to pay each time that we would do that, is what is basically what I'm asking.
If council chose at this moment to have an attorney who was on retainer to to be able to consult with separately on on issues where a majority of council disagrees with with the office of law, a county council could choose to engage that attorney in any manner they saw fit. The issue here is the language of this chain.
My question was the cost involved. Was the cost aspect involved? That is my only question right now.
And that would be a question that that would be answered by the majority of council who decided to go out and engage the separate attorney. I don't have any idea what the attorney costs for the election board matter, because county council did that on its own.
So but there would be costing heard each time, basically, that we'd be going out finding outside council, or we did not agree with the office of law, is what I'm asking. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have
Mrs. Redd, one item here, I think, for complete transparency. And I've already said that I would agree to the dissonance ballot is, there's a price for hiring this person. So for complete transparency to the taxpayer, I I want a price on what he's gonna cost us for the year. So they know exactly what they're voting. They're the bosses, we're turning it over to them, but I want them to exactly know what they're voting.
So I I agree with you. I think that there are, there are things missing from this. I have no problem with, this is just my opinion, I I think the public should be able to vote on this. I just wish that we had gotten a legal review before it even came in front of council, because now we have all of these corrections to be made during a voting session. We're trying to make corrections on the, we're missing dollar amounts, we're missing words, we're there are so many mistakes in this. I don't know, I don't know.
My question to you, if we waited two weeks, but this still be put on the ballot, there's no problem with putting it in the ballot. Because we have everything in place in two weeks for a vote, and then the people know what they're voting for on the ballot.
I think, but when is the deadline? Does anybody know?
I think thirteen Tuesdays, I think it's about these before the primaries.
This is just to get on the ballot, this may pass this as some of the boards.
Yeah, but they're voting on it. The solicitor is gonna cost the taxpayer money.
And we know that probably
I mean, that's the only, I I want them exactly knowing what they're voting.
But we can't put a dollar amount on it on the ballot, because it doesn't work that way. The budget is up to us solely, so whoever we go out and hire after an RFP process. I mean, if we look at the average cost of an attorney, Mr. DeLuca is making seventy-five thousand right now, and full-time solicitor takes fifty-five thousand. Quite honestly, it'd probably be around the seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollar range within the same average that we're paying now for internal attorney. But we are also paying external attorneys all over the place. When the office of law is supposed to reach, is that gonna represent all A B Cs, all commissions, you know, all boards, all authorities?
That's not true.
They don't.
I'm the chairman.
Yes.
If we're saying thirteen Tuesdays before, that puts us at February fifteenth. We have our next meeting on eight.
February what? What's that?
February fifteenth. If you're counting back from May seventeen.
But by the time it goes in, then it's executed, it won't make it till the November ballot. Because of, because of the timeline.
Is it a terrible shame if it waits till the November ballot?
Yes.
Well, first of all, you don't have any money budget in this budget position. No matter what the position costs, money's not in it.
It would be better, it may be better than to wait, to put it on to the November and then read the budget for it.
I think we should put it up.
I think we have consent here to put it on the ballot.
We want, we want it on the ballot. I want it on the ballot. I just want to make sure that it's correct.
I think sooner than later, and we can correct the budget later. I mean, we can amend the budget anytime if the door.
But if listening to Mr. DeLuca, you know, saying that there could be problems, I would rather work through this, you know, scrub it clean before we vote on it. I definitely want it on the ballot, but I I just don't want to support it if if I'm not able to process.
So if we're gonna scrub it clean, we don't need his opinion or the office of law, and let's hire our own counsel to to scrub it clean. So he takes his bias out, and we have our own attorney to to figure that non-bias approach then. Because he's gonna have a bias, because he works for the county. His paycheck comes from the county, and so does all the entire office of law. So it would be a conflict for him to comment on something that's gonna protect his job.
Regardless of the the conflict right now, I I respect your opinion, but we have, we have a motion and a second for agenda item number nine. I think we've had plenty of discussion. If 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 anybody wants to make a further motion.
Postpone. I don't think it's a table.
Okay, we have a motion postponed. We have a second. We have a second. We have a motion and a second to postpone. We have a roll call on postponing agenda item number nine.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Willoughby?
No.
Mr. LaScavitch?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Number nine is postponed. Number ten, motion to adopt resolution declaring the vacancy on Luzern County community board of fifteen.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. McGinnly? Second. Second, Mr. McDermott. Roll call, Mr. Thor.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Mr. Willoughby? Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Rado?
Yes, thank you, Mr. McGinnly. On that board. Agenda item number eleven, motion to adopt resolution authorizing the county manager to execute the sale of two parcels of county-owned property in handover ownership to Robert Goebach.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call? Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavitch?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Rado?
Yes.
Mr. Urban, I think you have to get a reason for it.
Same as always, it's the county manager and our executive.
Alright, for public comment, I have Mr. Griffin.
Members of council, fellow citizens, great Griffin, our light committee. Difficult decisions tonight, a lot of tough discussion, a lot of research, millions of dollars discussed. And so what our light committee is concerned with is affordable housing. And we've been working with the redevelopment authority, Earth Conservancy, and it's been talked about building hundreds of homes on reclaimed mine land. Earth Conservancy supports it, and and this is just an update, because we've discussed this. Things are moving. Council's going to be approached by other government, government entities. We're just asking that if we save a few of the A R P dollars for affordable housing, and why does that concern council? Well, we have crumbling housing structure of old homes, shortage of homes to buy. We have thousands of older homes that are disrepair, and very few new homes are being built. Example, a hundred thirteen thousand dollar cottage type home on Miller Street in Luzern sold for a hundred thirteen thousand dollars in one day. We have a flipped home in Swarsville had five bidders and sold for two hundred ninety-nine thousand. The the working families are being crunched out of the housing market. So there's a responsibility, and the A R P money can be used for affordable housing. So we have a lot of support from other government entities that will be approaching council. So please save some of the dollars, so that we can have a future for for working families, so that they may be able to buy one of these affordable homes. Wilkes-Barre, Corbrite neighborhoods, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass this out to all council members for for later review. But redevelopment authority, Andy Riley, great success, twenty homes in Wilkes-Barre. They're they're occupied now, mid-price for seniors, families, energy efficient. We want hundreds of these on the mine reclaimed land. There's a lot of support. The federal authorities are supporting it now with more money for mine reclamation. So please keep all this in the back of your mind while you're while you're working on that elevators, the bridges, the I T. But please save a few dollars of A R P money to help. When these officials come to you, and they're coming, they're gonna ask you for some A R P money, money to help the state and federal put hundreds of homes available for working families. So we'll keep you updated. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Newman? Did you have anything to add?
Please.
Mr. Newman, yeah?
I'd like to discuss item number three. Stormwater issue?
Oh, this is the, this is the end of the, the end of the
Okay, so we're not talking about the item?
No, not yet. If you want to talk at the beginning of the work session, you can.
Okay, we're not up to the work session yet?
We're not on the work session yet.
Okay. I did want to comment, and if I'm, if I'm not based on this one, tell me. I'd like to comment on the elevator situation at the prison. Okay? Lot of money involved. It's a very, very old building. It seems to me there was something Crawford to the county council, and that's to move the prison down to retreat, to the retreat section. Correctional institute. There's no elevators down there. It's all on one floor. Why don't you consider that in lieu of all the money you're gonna spend on water treatment? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mr. Mapp?
This is a very important topic where the rubber meets the road with regards to the new council person. And the reason I'm addressing council and Luzern County citizen is that ethical behavior is paramount to a legitimate government. One of the many responsibilities council members have is to appoint individuals to commissions, accountability commissions, conduct commissions, and ethics commissions in particular. There is a reason why these commissions are the top of the list with regards to authorities, boards, and commissions. I believe it's because this is their most important responsibility. Again, ethical behavior is of the utmost importance for a legitimate government. Overview of A C E commission is to be an independent and objective commission. It is their responsibility to oversee the operation of Luzern County government. The ability to monitor our government, officials, and internal controls is foremost to an effective and transparent government of the people, by the people, and for the people. The commission is required to monitor our government in a confidential yet open process. This assures the citizens of Luzern County good government. Individuals on these commissions are appointed by current council members. Your decision will represent what agendas will be in term. Ethics is first and foremost to a legitimate governing body of the people, by the people, and for the people, is what should be recognized. Each of the seated council members were elected by the people with the highest popular vote count. All right, Ron Knapp earned eight thousand five hundred and forty-six votes on eighteen twenty twenty-one. No candidate has received a higher number of votes for the available council seat. Obviously, the citizens of Luzern County have called for Ron Knapp to fill the available council seat. The person standing here represents eight thousand five hundred and forty-six voters who selected this candidate. These voters are well aware that Ron Knapp has a record of keeping local government bodies informed about excessive tax increases. Residents of Nanticoke witnessed a decrease in their sewer fees in twenty twenty because of the heated debate regarding the MS four unfunded federal mandate that took place in twenty nineteen. The election year of the same community, this budget passed without an increase in taxes or refugee fees for twenty twenty-two. I was against the recent transfer of the million dollars from the reserve account. I believe it would have set up the newly seated council members for failure in early months of their term.
Thank you.
The million dollars is there in case of an emergency or high priority allocation. Each of the seated council members were elected by the people with the highest popular vote count.
Thank you, Mr. Rado.
Higher than that.
Thank you.
If I could finish this paragraph.
If you could wrap it up in the next ten seconds.
It will be done. I earned eight thousand five hundred and forty-six citizen votes, which is the highest vote count on eighteen twenty twenty-one for the available seat. Ethics is first and foremost to a legitimate governing body. Council should recognize that this is the petition of the citizens of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Rado.
Thank you for your time. Yes, I do once again. Honestly, I know I beat you guys up, and I hold you guys accountable. I heard you feed to the flame. But I really do understand you guys. I only get paid eight grand a year, and I do appreciate your time. I really do. But that doesn't mean I'm not gonna hold you guys accountable. So I do have one question from Ramilda Crocimo. Couple years ago, I posed some issues that I believe that there's some issues in the county jail and also in the court administration at the clerk courts, some irregularities, possible illegal wrongdoings. And I gave, at the time, David Pedry this one, and it was September twenty-third, twenty twenty. He said he would do an internal investigation. I also met with his assistant, I think, Parson. And I went over this, and and basically, he said he was gonna look into it. Nothing happened. As a matter of fact, I think there's a cover-up. I think that I need to it went by, COVID hit, blew me off, everything went dead. Last month, I I talked to Ramilda Crocimo, gave her a saybook. She said that she would do an investigation to see what happens. Um, nothing. I've been down to the office at least ten times in the last eight. I get redirected, blown off, and all that. So I just want to ask, Ramilda, number one, did she hire an investigator? Why hasn't that investigator called me and addressed the concerns of possible wrongdoings, maybe some kickbacks, maybe some illegal stuff, maybe? I don't want accused, but I think I have enough information to have an investigation. So Ramilda, what's the status?
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald, I'll speak on behalf of council. You have something with corruption going on. Go across that right here.
Okay.
Attorney Sam Saladucci, he's the head law enforcement in Luzern County.
Okay. What's that? Yes, Ramilda?
Good evening, council. Yes, Mr. Fitzgerald came into my office, and we met and discussed his issues. I think it was almost two hours. The information is being gathered, recommendation, or referral will be made, or is being made to the office of law, and I don't get involved in in the investigations. I let the the office of law or whatever independent agency is doing the investigation do the investigation. I will not rush them. I will not control the investigation. And I will, if council requests, give a report to council on the investigation and the litigation that Mr. Fitzgerald brought against the county.
I I appreciate that. Last thing I had is, the last time I met with David Pedry was on February seventh, two thousand nineteen, I think that's it. And after that, I actually met with Mark Rakovich individually. And I posed again this stuff to him, and he says that he would look into it. He said there was a couple ideas. This is what happened the next day that I got a voice message.
I'm sorry, you have to stop that reporting. That's inappropriate to play out at a council meeting.
Well, I just honestly, I'm not dissuading type, okay? I was told to go to the ACLU. I don't want to do that. I don't want to sit at the council, okay? I just want someone to care enough to do a real investigation that there's not going to be a cover-up, there's not going to be shredded files and all that. I have a roadmap. Anybody cares.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. If you'd like to email it to council, so we can see.
I actually have 11 of these. You guys are going to get them FedExed to you. I'm going to notarize every one of them and everything else. And I'm probably going to go to Shapiro this week.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Any other members of the public?
Madam Chair, this is Mark Rabo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Rabo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, on the vote that you guys took on the delinquent taxes or the repository properties, excuse me. I have the law in front of me. If Councilwoman McDermott wants to send it on to the Tax Claim Bureau, it's section 619.1 of the Real Estate Tax Sale Law, Section A, where it says, "Within 20 days following any sale under the Real Estate Tax Sale Law, a successful bidder shall be required to provide certification to the Tax Claim Bureau that the person is not delinquent in paying real estate taxes to any of the taxing districts where the property is located and that the proper person has no municipal utility bills that are more than one year outstanding." So that validates what I said in the beginning of the public comment in the beginning of this meeting. Also, with respect to the ballot question, under the Home Rule Optional Plan Law, Section 2944, time and manner of submission of question, a referendum on the question of the amendment of a home rule charter or an optional plan of government, the Home Rule Optional Plan Law shall be held when the elected officials find that the initiative of a petition or ordinance of the governing body is in proper order. The referendum shall be governed by the provisions of this act known as the Pennsylvania Election Code. The election officials shall cause the question to be submitted to the electors at the next primary, general, or municipal election occurring not less than the 13th Tuesday following the filing of the initiative petition or ordinance with the County Board of Elections. So there you go, right there. So as far as that goes. Now, on the question of the bridge, I always had a question with respect to, was it inspected by the American Society of Civil Engineers? Because I know the state did an assessment of all the bridges of all of the counties in the state. Now, was that done, was Louisiana County, all the bridges done in that assessment, in that inspection when the state did it? I forget what year it was, but I would ask the county, acting county manager and the county engineer to ask for that information from the state. I believe PennDOT might have that, or even if not, USDOT might have that. So if that might be a suggestion to have or take into consideration, that would be appreciated. Also, with respect to the bidding on the properties, going back to that, I wanted the Councilwoman McDermott and the Real Estate Committee to look into what was in the paper with respect to out-of-state bidders bidding on properties so high. And then once they win, the winning bidder goes to the, to the Tax Claim Bureau. I'm finishing up now. Once they, once they go to Tax Claim Bureau, they don't pay their bid that they won on. So that's been a very regular occurrence, and I would hope that the Real Estate Committee and the management would look into that because that would impede on tax revenue. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public?
Yes, this is Jess Morgan from Dallas again. I'd just like, I'd just like to have a, give you my general observation of what went on here tonight. It seems like whenever anybody's in doubt, hire an outside consultant and pay them more money for what you've already done. Two examples. The Election Bureau paid $70,000 to be told what you as council people had already told them to do. There were four, I believe it was four council people that's met numerous times, came up with long-term ideas to only have all their ideas turned around and gave back the same ideas for 70 grand. The IT department, I'm not an IT person, but as part of the IT, the election scanner, we were told tonight that, wow, part of the election scanner, what it would do would be to open all the envelopes. Well, you've already got a machine that does that. It's at the Election Bureau. Why do we need another one? Then you're going to have a machine that puts the ballots into the shore system? Really? We need another machine in Louisiana County like a hole in the head. What could possibly go wrong with the machine and the shore system? What we, what we did learn tonight was that the Election Bureau has been closed down, and they're doing work from home, remote work, really? Are you doing remote work into the shore system? And does the state know about this? And is the state okay with it? Wow, wow. So while you're busy ticking off your items on your to-do list, just know that you're ticking off a heck of a lot of the public. And I know that this has been brought up at least two other times tonight. But what the heck were you going to do if you didn't get this windfall from the federal government? What were you going to do to get all this stuff done? This money has not been given to Louisiana County from the federal government. It's been given from the taxpayers and our kids and our grandkids. And I hope you're going to keep that in mind when you're doling out millions and millions of dollars that generations down the line are going to have to pay for. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Any other members of the public? All in favor? Proposed extension, not being adjourned. We will, we convene for the work session at 9:05.
Recording stopped.
I'm saying Andy Riley said he was involved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good thing my wife is towards.
Yeah, she's five o'clock on Monday.
Yeah.
Son. Down the public ten seconds.
Yeah.
Recording in progress.
All right, it is nine eleven. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We've already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Ms. Lawrence, can I have the roll call, please?
Mr. LaScavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Dino? Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Loz.
Here.
Are there any additions or deletions from the work session agenda tonight?
I'd like to make some suggestion in light of the timeframe. Number one, everybody has their reports, so if they have questions, you can forward them to Mr. Swetson. Other than that, I don't think it's necessary for us to go over those tonight. Number two, that's a litigation issue, and Mr. Delucas already reported on that, that in our executive session, we had that. I believe that's something that we don't need to proceed with at this time. And going over to the next page, council committees, I don't think anybody was met at this point. And we can move that the next month to start reporting on them. If everybody's comfortable with that, that would be my suggestion.
Yes.
So would you like to make a motion now?
Sure. One, two, and nine.
Second.
All right.
Close sessions. All right. So we'll go to number three, discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a partnership agreement with the Blamley Valley Sanitary Authority. Ms. Prokamo?
Thank you. Council was presented with an agreement, partnership agreement, that actually, we've been working on for years with the sanitary authority. I believe that it is very understandable on what services the county will provide and the reductions in the county fee. I will highlight that the county will not have to pay for the county fee of 2019, 2020, and 2021. If there are questions, certainly, you can ask them now, or, you know, you can send me an email or call me, and I will gladly be able to answer them or find answers for you.
Are there any questions? All right, here and now we'll move on to number four.
Okay, number four is a list of recommended projects for the use of the ARP fund. This is not a final list, but this is a list that our team has worked on, and it's suggestions. From the voting session, there are so many questions that I know council has and will have. What I suggest is that you send them to me, and we, the team, one of the team members or myself will respond to you. So if there's some questions right now, I'll take them, but otherwise, I have a mantra that is just ask, and we will respond.
Any questions on agenda item number four? Here and now we'll move on to agenda item number five, discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute the master agreement with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
I believe, is Matt Jones on the call? It's his department that put this together. Again, if you have questions on it, it's a master agreement with PennDOT that we had before, and I have it on the agenda for council's consideration.
Question on that. I read that. I think it's just pretty much a continuation of the agreement in the past.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on agenda item number five? Being on agenda item number six, discussion regarding the ordinance in 2022 fiscal year budgets for Luzern County State Facility closure ordinance.
I'll defer to Mr. Swetson on this.
Thank you. Prior council voted for this in last year's budget. This funding was received in either September or October of last year. While we had dollar amounts and estimates of what would be used in 2021 and 2022, we didn't have any final numbers. So we basically backed out what was used in 2021. Our understanding is that this program will be closed in 2022. So if council approves those dollar amounts, we add it to the 2022 budget. We can write the checks to the said municipalities, and we already receive the revenue and have the money sitting in the checking account at this time. So it would be on for voting next time, very similar to what we did a few months ago, just with the remaining balance.
Are there any more questions on agenda item? Seeing now we'll move on to agenda item number seven, the Controller's report.
I'll be real brief. Council's received the letters from the Controller's office regarding the resolution 2021-52. And I know, I'm assuming most council members got a chance to read that. But the problem, it's not a problem, but what the Controller's office is doing, it's a compliance audit of all tax collectors prior to them getting the duplicate. One of the processes that we're running, we ran into is this resolution 2021-52, which council passed last February. It states that they have to have a deputy on the, on the rolls by the municipality. They also have to have the county EIN number on their banking accounts. And there's other provisions in this resolution that the county, the county tax collectors have not been made aware of because they didn't get a copy of the resolution. So, and I'm not saying that it's anybody's particular fault, but I think tax collectors have an obligation to know what their jobs are. But the county probably should have sent them a copy of this resolution, all the tax collectors, so they know that council passed a resolution requiring these things of tax collectors. And the issue was, and I was on council, most of the folks who are here may have recalled, is that we have an issue with the tax collector that passed away in office, and we had a real difficult time getting the money for the taxes that were collected because there was nobody on the banking account. Consequently, back in February, when Senator Pedri brought this resolution to council, that was one of the things that needed to be addressed, was so that we didn't get caught in that type of situation again. So that resolution put language in there that said that they had to have our EIN number on it for ownership. So the county had ownership, doesn't give us the ability to take any money from the account, but it does give us ownership of the banking account. So if a tax collector would expire or have a problem getting money, the county can win, ask the bank to pass a new resolution to assign a new signature to take the money out. So those provisions are in this resolution, but the tax collectors have not followed up on that because most of, none of them were afforded the resolution. So my, my idea at the council was, maybe at the next agenda, if they would think about possibly making an amendment to resolution 2021-52 to extend the deadline from February first to possibly June first, to give tax collectors an opportunity to comply with this resolution so that they would be in compliance. That would be very helpful for the tax collectors, first of all. But second of all, I mean, I don't think it would be fair for us to go to a tax collector in another week from now and say, the resolution says you get a thousand dollar fine if you don't have a tax collector. Doesn't have a deputy, does not have the EIN number of the county on there, and they're responsible for a thousand dollar fine not being made aware of the resolution. So I think in fairness to the tax collector, would be, it would be beneficial for council to amend this resolution to extend the date, at least not the provisions, but maybe extend the date. And that might be a way to fix the tax collector's boundary, as well as make sure that they're in compliance with the taxes, which is of county council. So that's my, that's my concern, as we have other issues with compliance office, but nothing that's as time sensitive as this particular document. So I would ask council to possibly consider that for the next voting session to get that taken care of, because the next voting session will be February eighth, by the way, which will be well past the deadline. But certainly, we'll be able to do that if that's the wish as a council. So appreciate you considering that, and the Controller's office note that it's meeting if you're gonna do that, right?
Thank you, Controller. Does anybody have any questions for him? No, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your opportunity.
We move on to agenda item number eight, discussion regarding the ethics complaint. I'm gonna ask council to refer to the Ace Commission's adjudication. Most of the details for that are in it. We do have one, I'm just trying to get this knowledge.
You could. It's regarding the.
Okay, we do have one comment regarding the, the ethics complaint. There was an email sent to us. It's from Denise Williams, and it says, "I'm a citizen who filed a complaint with the Ethics Commission. I filed it prior to my being a member of the elections board. I was present virtually during the meeting in which this happened and was appalled by what I witnessed. The incident was the catalyst in my decision to apply for the chair position on the board. I agree with the Ethics Commission's findings and recommendation of censure and fine for councilman Stephen Urban. They are justified and necessary. It is very concerning that a councilperson openly violated the county charter and ethics code in the manner he did, accepting a chairmanship seat on the county board of elections. The charter framers put protections in the charter and code of ethics to prevent this type of abuse of power by elected officials. He knowingly overstepped his authority as a councilperson. In the interest of all the citizens of Luzern County, emphasis must be placed on protecting and maintaining the integrity, soundness, and incorruptibility of the board of elections. Sincerely, Denise Williams, Kingston, California." Does anyone have any discussion on this? I'm not exactly sure how much we can discuss.
I'm just gonna make one quick comment. You know, I think the decisive action last year and what they needed to do. I think people on the Ace Commission violated their own ethics code too by not RFPing certain attorneys that are on that commission or represent that particular commission. I think they're complicit, you know, in their own job as far as looking at how they get an attorney to work for them. So, you know, I'm just pretty much saying that, like I said, council took their decisive action later. You guys decide whatever you want to do going forward.
I said one comment. I noticed too that it was the, it said the complaint was formally served to the courthouse. It wasn't served to the respondent. I think that should have been an issue. Wasn't served at his address. It was served at the courthouse, which at the time, I believe, was under COVID restrictions with limited access.
Any other comments? None. All right, here and now, we'll move into public comment. Anybody's public comment? Mr. Newman? Mr. Now?
I just wanted to make mention about the ordinance for a budget amendment related to the facility closure because of Mananik Okean. I think that it's inevitable. It's gonna happen, but the sooner better. I'm sure that they have earmarked already for the $425,000. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Newman. Sorry about that.
Item number three, the stormwater fees. And the county manager, just a little bit appreciate your efforts in getting some reductions. Certainly removes the potential, potential for tax increases, property taxes. It's a very heavy lift for the county as it was presented. And it's nice to know that the county's doing something to reduce stormwater fees. What are you doing for the poor people out there that have to pay? Is anything being done to try to get their reductions in what they're paying every month or every quarter? Nothing. Now, this comes under the heading of shoulda, coulda, woulda. When the issue was hot, you should have been fighting and have this done a tax and not a fee. And you know why it wasn't a tax and not a fee? Anybody know that? Because authorities do not have the ability to tax. They can only put a fee on people. The only ones that can tax is a municipal body, and you're a municipal body. And if you go and fought it to be a tax, guess what? You wouldn't be worried about negotiating because your buildings and your property is tax exempt. And that would have been a big savings for the people out in the street that have to pay the stormwater fee. It's a very touchy issue with me, and I wish it would have been done differently. Maybe there'll be a future opportunity. I hope there is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mr. Griffin?
The item about the Ethics Committee Commission, and I brought this up as a council member, and I brought it up before that as well. The Ethics Commission has turned into be a tribunal, a legal tribunal, which was not the design of the charter drafters. But council needs to address that, and I've been asking, when I was on the co-review committee, myself, Mr. McGinley, and Ms. Hou, we haven't, we didn't have the opportunity to get to it. But that's something that this council really needs to look at. It's starting to be an instrument that people don't use, except when they want to use it as a weapon against somebody else, and that was not the intent of the Ethics Commission. All too often, we see complaints filed because we want to call somebody out for wrongdoing. I know there's been many times where we've seen complaints just to smear somebody's name or just to do something to get their ability to embarrass somebody else. That was not the intent of the Ethics Committee or the Commission. And we need to address that. Council needs to address that as a co-review committee and address it sooner rather than later, because that is the only vehicle. We have situations in children and youth that I believe strongly that would never even have risen to the point where it is now had we had a better way of running the Ethics Commission. Where people who are employees would see something and could say something without repercussion and without the ability to have to have an attorney and all the other things that are gonna go, that are going on with this commission. So I think we are really missing the mark on that commission. I think the commission was put in there for a specific reason, based on Kids for Cash back in the day. But its usefulness is very, very important for employees who work here to have something that they see as wrong to get addressed without repercussion and without any embarrassment on their part, just for the good of the order. And I think that's what we're missing on the Ethics Commission. So I think there's a lot of things that need to be addressed there, and I hopefully council will address that in the near future as a review. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any other members of the public for a public comment on the work session?
Mr. Vice Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I would like to discuss, follow up with what County Controller Griffith just brought up with respect to the Ethics Ace Commission. I think that it needs to be reformed as far as, because when you don't have an actual uniform standard that ensures equal protection under the law, that is a very dangerous precedent and very dangerous, very, you know, like to cross legally and ethically. So I think that council needs to tread cautiously here with respect to picking and choosing which, which code or which ordinance or which provision and order to enforce because out of political expediency or bias or prejudice. Because that can lead to a lot of, lot more problems than short-term, scoring political points short-term. That's as far as that issue goes. Also on the stormwater fee, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of council, I've been fighting that issue since 2013, when it was introduced in Hazelton City. And I also spoke out at, with the Chesapeake Bay Commission twice. And I do believe that the stormwater fee, and actually in 2013, when I did my homework on it, when the Senate Environmental Committee that oversees DEP spoke about the cleanup and charging for the cleanup of the Susquehanna River, guess who was the one who proposed a stormwater fee and stormwater authority? None other than our own Senator John Yedichak. So. None other than our own Senator John Yudichak. So if anybody has any problems or complaints with respect to why the stormwater fee was created or why it was allowed to be created, I think they should take it up with him in his office, because that was the nexus and creation of it. And Senator Gene Yaw, who is now currently the Senate Environmental Committee Chairman, should be contacted because $250 million out of the $6 billion that the state received from the American Recovery Act money can be applied by Luzern County through the Conservation District. So I would suggest strongly that the council look in and, and the county manager explore that option rather than using our own ARPA money funds for paying the stormwater fee. That would go a long way, and it would free up funds for our own infrastructure, other infrastructure projects throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anyone else for a public comment? All right, here and now, entertaining a motion to adjourn. Motion in second. All those in favor?
Recording stopped.